Well, we'll get started. Let's pray. Father, do thank you for this day. Lord, I thank you for this town, Father. Thank you for this council that we've assembled, Lord. I pray that you would give us guidance, give us direction, give us wisdom, discernment as we make decisions about the good of our city. Lord, ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Let's stand and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I should have called a meeting to order, and I'll do that now. And open forum, anybody registered to speak?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we'll move on to our work session. Presentation of department budgets for fiscal year 2021, 2022. City manager in finance, I think city manager is up first.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, good afternoon. By the way, thank you for making time this on an off Tuesday. We certainly appreciate it. We are in the midst of the budget process, and this is the beginnings of the conversations with city council. One of the things I had heard when I first got hired and over the last 11 months now since I've been here, that the city council would like to have some more involvement with the city budget and to hear from departments when it comes to the budget process. So that's exactly what you're going to hear today and next week. There's a lot of information to cover. What we're hoping to do is hit the highlights of various operational budgets and hopefully our attempts to address some of the needs that you all have mentioned to me privately and publicly, along with conversations that we've had with the community about just needs in our in our community. So hopefully, we'll be able to hit those highlights here over the next two weeks and as we continue further into the summer, as you all begin to adopt the budget. Certainly, again, as I mentioned, a lot of information to cover. I've encouraged the departments to hit the highlights and not read every single bullet, but you do have a lot of information. You will see a lot of information before you. Certainly welcome any input from council as these workshops conclude, and your feedback is important to us to make sure that we are fulfilling the needs that you need, whether we need more information or less information. So it's always that balancing act, so we certainly are very welcome to those comments. And so with that, I'll be quiet. I'm going to turn it over to Pam. We do have an order of presentations, so I'll let her come up to the podium and give some preliminary info, and then we'll get started with our presentations.
Mayor, council, like Mario said, this is a new process for our department heads this year. They actually made these presentations tomorrow, and I a couple of weeks ago, and I think you're going to hear a lot of good information tonight. Understand that in the past, this has been presented by either myself or the city manager. So this is new for them, but I think they're going to present you a lot of good information. I am here for any questions, and I've tried to let them understand that anything that I can help with, I brought a big, very detailed budget over there, so any questions I hope that we're able to answer tonight. If not, I am available at any point for any more, you know, deep dives on this information. This is a first presentation. Y'all will actually get a draft of the budget by the 31st of this month, and we'll actually present it to you on the first council meeting in August. This is just kind of give you a high points of what the departments have done this past year, what they hope to do next year, and some of the items that they are requesting in this budget, which next week we'll follow up in the second budget workshop with some presentation to you on some new items that they have asked for tonight. I'm going to sum, you know, kind of make a summation of those and ask for your direction on what new programs, new employees, new initiatives that y'all would like to implement for next year. There is, I think I gave you a copy of the order. This went out to the departments this afternoon, but just in case they forget, you might want to bring them up, because I'm not real sure that I didn't bring enough copies for everybody. But one thing that's going to be a little different for them tonight as opposed to the first presentation is each department had a separate PowerPoint. This one, I've combined them so that we'll try to go a little bit faster. So for instance, public works, we go from sanitation collection to landfill, and it's just going to be a seamless thing. So you'll see a questions slide. If you have questions, go ahead. If you want to wait till the end, however, it's just there are so many departments and some of these divisions that we were afraid if we waited till the very end for questions, you might forget. So we are going to stop between departments and allow questions. So with that, I'm going to let the fire chief start with the fire services division.
How did he get to go first? The favorite.
It was actually Mr. Mayor, members of council, Keith Kibler, your fire chief. I was elected to go first because at the last council meeting, I had a flawless PowerPoint presentation, and I didn't break anything. That is my prize. So tonight, we'll just sort of grind through these. We have three departments within our division to talk about tonight, facility services, inspections, and then obviously the big one, which is our regular fire services group. Now, I didn't have a flawless PowerPoint presentation. So talking about facility services, obviously COVID changed the way we do things, and that includes your janitorial and building maintenance functions of the city. The building maintenance team is two people that maintain virtually all of the city facilities. We also have four custodial staff that maintain the city. During COVID, our janitorial or custodial staff really shifted to decontaminating, fogging, hitting the public restrooms as hot and heavy as we could, and really shifted our efforts away from vacuuming the carpet and into sanitation. The other thing that happened during this fiscal year is that the day-to-day supervision of that custodial staff was transferred to the departments or the divisions where those people work. For example, the library and rec center has two custodians that typically work there. They were managed previously by the facility supervisor, but that person, because they were so spread out, that person couldn't do the day-to-day supervision and didn't have the ability to have them pivot at a moment's notice. So the police department and the municipal court have one assigned to them. Community services has have two assigned to them, and there's one custodian that does city hall and the C V B and these buildings kind of downtown. So they all still are able to go back and forth and help one another, but just on a day-to-day basis, making sure that tasks get done was reassigned. So it's a lot more efficient and effective the way we have it done now. Over the next year, one of the things that we really intend to do is to do a facility survey and try to take a look at our facility needs on a little longer-term plan. We've never sat down and said, over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years, what are the things that we know we're going to need? So we know that we need air conditioners periodically, and we know we need roofs periodically. And what we would like to do is sit down and put together a plan with a level funding mechanism so that we would have a near-level funding from year to year to do those major projects. So we don't try to do the city hall roof and the library HVAC system all in one fiscal year. We try to stage those, and if we're able to do that, that'll give us a lot better ability to project our budget needs into the future. And so that's a big part of our goal. We're also working on some energy efficiency ideas, some automation, and some smart technology upgrades, and we'll work through that as we bring our staff back together. The challenges we have with regard to facilities, obviously, many or all of our facilities, virtually all of our facilities are aging. We have many years of deferred maintenance across the city's facility landscape. Obviously, I have a picture of a fire station because that's near and dear to my heart, but this is certainly the case across the city. We also have evolving needs and use of facilities. The needs for the community have changed over the years, and so we need to address that. Obviously, our service changes during COVID. We've shifted back to a much more normal environment, but we've continued to do that sanitation and disinfection processes as we move forward. Currently, we have a position for a facility supervisor, one facilities technician, four maintenance custodians. We currently have the one position vacant, which is our facilities technician. We're advertising for that position now, and just this week, we filled the facility supervisor position, so we're excited about getting those projects moving forward. The facility services actually works on a day-to-day basis for Michael Self, who's also our emergency manager, division chief in the fire department. That's sort of where they fall organizationally. And you could take a look at what our proposed budget versus the last budgets. It's a fairly level funding. We haven't asked for any major increases within this budget area, and in fact, we're showing at this point a decrease of a few thousand dollars that we can save. And so moving forward, moving forward, obviously, we'll have, as we go into next year and the year after, hopefully, we'll have a really a better idea of what we need to be doing to maintain our facilities. And I'll be happy to answer any questions about this little group of people.
One question, only facility manager, is that the same as a facility supervisor?
Yes, sir. We re-titled that position facility supervisor this year.
And in the past, each entity, each department head had their own supervision as far as maintenance?
So with regard to the custodial staff, all the custodians were supervised by that facility manager, and so no matter where they were, so it required to actually do the supervision required a lot of miles moving around town. And so, and there was a lot less, the utilization is a lot better. So instead of Brian Bray having to call somebody and say, hey, I need a custodian to go to the railroad depot, he just assigns one of them that's already in his building to go do that. So it just helps with scheduling, and it helps with everything, so.
Thank you.
Good, yes.
What do we contract out?
What do we contract out?
Because I saw contracted services. I was just curious what that was.
So we contract out some electrical work, some plumbing work, some HVAC work, but really, air conditioner work is the biggest part of that. But we do contract all the skilled trades, and then occasionally, when we had COVID and we had to put Plexiglas in the council chambers, we called a local glass company, so that's that.
Is there a particular reason for the decrease in the budget this year?
I hope Pam is.
Okay, yeah. So you're going to notice this throughout the presentation. On your 2021 budget numbers, that's your amended budget. And so we have already made, I know if y'all remember, a couple of months ago, we had made some budget amendments for storm overtime, various things. And so there's quite a few budget amendments that have been made in the 2021 year. So on personnel especially, you're going to see some increases that it looks like, well, you're going to see it looks to be a decrease between 21, 22 and 2021, but it's because we have certain things, payouts, like in the police department, you're going to see three retirements of long-term employees that were rather expensive. You're going to have overtime issues. Fire, you've got deployment overtime, and so those numbers are a little bit, I don't want to say skewed, but this year, we have already made budget amendments for 2021 that will not be reflected in next year because next year is just a, hopefully, a normal, quiet year, so.
Without a ton of amendments.
But any of those specifics, as you take these home with those kind of specific numbers, if you'll shoot me an email, I will be happy to answer any of those in detail.
Okay, thank you.
We hope next year is a regular quiet year.
Now that she said it, it's not going to be.
Thanks, Pam.
Anybody else?
Okay, we'll jump into inspection services. The inspection services group does our building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical inspections. They also do code enforcement and our restaurant inspections. So during 2021, the biggest thing we did was support the COVID response, obviously, modified our operations, and then worked really hard on the winter storm recovery, getting people's power and water turned back on after it was off. For the next 12 months, our plan is to ask you to support a more proactive code enforcement regime. Currently, our code enforcement and nuisance abatement is on a, on a you-call-we-come 911 sort of basis. That is not a particularly effective way to do it, but we have one code enforcement officer that serves the entire city, and so we end up with a really challenging environment for her just to keep up with the number of calls about high grass and weeds and dilapidated buildings and all those things. So we're going to ask in a few minutes for you to support increasing those code enforcement efforts significantly, and we have some plans to do that. We also want to do what we can to increase property values across the community. Obviously, code enforcement is a big way to increase those property values and to try to make that a better place. We want to improve online access to permitting and improve our permitting software system, which needs some love, and we're taking a really hard look at how to do that. Is it to keep our current system and re-implement it, or is it to start over with a new system with a comparable annual cost? So it'll be a budget, should be a budget neutral item, but we're trying to figure out the best way to do that. And then make sure that we're improving public perception of the process and make people feel good about going through the process with regard to building permits and those things. Operational issues, we have a lack of adequate staffing for code enforcement. That's just an absolute fact. We have challenges with that permit licensing software, and then obviously, we have a very rapidly changing code environment across the country, and I assume that that will continue with the Surfside building collapse and all the other things that we see on the news that affect that built environment. For COVID-19, one of the biggest things that the inspection services group pivoted to was quickly disseminating all the information necessary from the governor's office about lockdowns, shutdowns, closures, requirements, social distancing across our assembly venues, our restaurants, and the places where people gathered and populated. And so the entire inspections team and a lot of fire trucks were handing out handbills, going and talking to store managers, making sure that they had all the most up-to-date information as those things changed 37 times during the pandemic last year. So that was a big part of what they did. So our building inspections team includes five people. We have a permit technician, who is the person that the public sees when they come to apply for a permit. We have one health inspector, one code enforcement officer, a technical inspector, and a building official. Currently, our building official and technical code inspector are both vacant. We're advertising for both positions aggressively. Our technical code inspector is vacant because he's our new facility supervisor. So we were able to transition, Chris is a master plumber, and he transitioned over this week. He's doing both jobs now. David McNeese is working in the engineering department as well, and he's doing both jobs. So our permitting process is still being handled, but we just have people that are kind of doing dual jobs until we get those filled, so. Inspection services falls under the fire marshal currently, Mike Brown, along with the other things that he handles, so you can kind of see where they fall in the city's org chart currently. Again, with regard to personnel services, you'll see an increase. That's because of the increased requirements we placed on the building official position, trying to recruit and retain the most highly qualified building official that we possibly can. A slight increase in supplies and pretty flat across the board beyond that with regard to our budget. The supplemental packages, the things we're asking for on top of the budget that you saw before you, is a code enforcement enhancement. And how we see that now is that our current code enforcement officer will become a supervisor for code enforcement. We hire another full-time employee that would be funded in all or partly by the solid waste fund to focus on illegal dumping across the community. And I'm sure you'll hear about that when you get to sanitation or the solid waste group as well. And then two part-time employees that could just be out on the streets proactively looking for code enforcement issues and then sending those violation notices or the reminders, hey, you need to clean up your mess. That project, we anticipate it's going to be about 86,1 for the employees and then $50,000 to purchase two additional vehicles to make sure that they have the vehicles they need. And again, one of those vehicles would be funded by solid waste. This would also allow us to have the flexibility and the time to try to recruit a volunteer corps, not to talk to people or to send notices, but maybe to be our eyes and ears and drive around, identify properties, and work with us. That would be a good opportunity for somebody that was possibly retired and wanted an opportunity to come out and make the city a little more beautiful. And so we really have a plan to start trying to work toward that volunteer corps even before we do the enhancement project, but that's our plan, so. Oh, and there's a replacement vehicle in there as well, so. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have about inspections.
Feel free.
On the code enforcement, the 86,000, does that cover a new employee plus the part-time?
So it would be a promotion of one employee, full-time employee, and then two part-time employees within that.
And that 86,000?
Yes, sir. So this is effectively a tripling of our code enforcement team, which would triple our ability to get things cleaned up. It would increase the speed, but it would also put us in the neighborhoods where we're driving around looking for issues before they become problems.
With the code enforcement supervisor, is that a new position? As far as, in the past, did we ever have that position before?
So our proposal would be that we take our current code enforcement officer and promote her to supervisor so that she can lead and guide that program. She does a fantastic job, and it's just spread so thin that she's got the right people's skills and the right attitude to really make a difference, and so that's our current proposal.
Yes, do you anticipate that if we have more code enforcement, that it'll increase the city's income in some way to offset the expenses?
So absolutely, I want to start with property values. Property values increase if you have a clean neighborhood, and so that's number one. There could be, there will be some fines that are assessed through the municipal court, but that's not our goal and our philosophy in code enforcement, is helping people correct their problems and not, I would rather people spend the money cleaning up their property than spend the money paying the municipal court. And I think that's been our philosophy, and council certainly could have a different philosophy, but we want people to understand what the rules are. We want to explain the rules, and honestly, most people want to do the right thing. Sometimes they just don't know how or know how to find help to do that. I think Mario has.
Yes, and that's a good point, good question, council member. I think the other thing too is not just getting compliance, but when you find folks that either are elderly or don't have the means to make the repairs, then we work with those community partners that can get us, get those folks to comply, whether it's Mission NAC, Love Inc., it could be Administrative Alliance, there are a lot of groups. Just talking with some of the professors, there are a lot of students that need service hours, and so they can come in and assist with mowing of grass, trimming up limbs, those things that are relatively easy for most folks, but for some, it's just a near impossibility because they just don't have the means or the ability to do it.
I was even thinking tourism dollars, and there might be some recouping. I'm just wondering, the cost.
Excited to hear about the goal of improving public perception of the permitting process. I think that's great and important. I've heard a lot anecdotally, just negative attitude about that. Is there any reasoning for having two part-time code enforcement as opposed to one full-time?
So the cost is probably a little bit, is a little bit lower, but our thought was that we would have some flexibility with regard to those hires. I thought that the idea that we might find two people that are really passionate about our community, about making NAC a more beautiful place, and that we may have an easier time finding that with two part-time openings, just kind of taking a look at around the landscape, and it's a more flexible opportunity, certainly amenable to either way.
What is, in your mind, what does that person look like? Or what kind of, is that a young person, old person?
Doesn't look like me.
Yeah.
Not at all. No, no, I think it could be, I think it could be a person at any stage of life, but I know that there are a lot of retired people in our community that are looking for part-time opportunities to serve, to work and maybe earn a little income. And certainly, there are some younger people in our community, you know, maybe SFA students or graduate students that are passionate about environmental health and, you know, the environment and those things. And so that was our idea, was to just make it a little more flexible job offering. I don't have anybody in mind, so.
Ms. James.
I really appreciate the initiative to enhance code enforcement. That is something that has been sorely needed, I think, for a number of years. I'm sure you have seen the result of sort of not, just not having the resources there to do what we really need to do. So I definitely appreciate that, and you answered really my question, which was sort of how you proposed enhancing those code enforcement tasks. And beyond that, I, like Ms. Fisher, I am very happy about the idea of streamlining the permitting process, making that a lot more efficient, because I think that, you know, I have friends who do construction work in Austin, and it takes them six to eight weeks sometimes to get a permit to remodel a kitchen, things like that. So it is not as bad here as it certainly could be.
Please ask them to come do a project here, because they will be thrilled with our turnaround time.
Yeah, but I think being able to do it online and being able to do it more smoothly and easily will help compliance in attaining those permits where a lot of people just try to skip over the process, I think. And it's a lot easier for things like code enforcement and inspections to stay on top of those issues if people are actually pulling those permits.
Absolutely. And even internally, we don't like those bureaucratic processes. We want things to be streamlined and smooth and quick and easy, so.
Yeah, so I'm all in favor of both of those.
Yeah, one quick question about code enforcement employees. Is that a position that has to have a certification, even where it is full-time or part-time?
Yes, sir. So there's a very brief certification process. There's about a week-long class that's followed by a state test.
Is that class given here locally?
No, sir. It's given in the Dallas area.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right.
Great, let's jump over to my fun one. So obviously, COVID-19 had an impact on the fire response world, but in the last year, we dealt with COVID and we dealt with the February storm, responded to a little over 3,000 calls for service, which was down. It was down from previous years due to two things. One is that we altered our response methodology to not go to low-acuity medical calls during the COVID-19 scare, to reduce the risk of infection across our employee group and also the risk, to reduce the risk to the public that we would be spreading COVID. And so we continued to go to those high-acuity calls, the things that people were going to die or lose a limb from, but we didn't want to be in and out of the nursing homes and in and out of the doctor's offices quite as often, so we did reduce that. The other thing is that we had a marked decrease in the number of people calling 911, I guess because they were home and not out and moving around as much, and so we had a marked decrease in those calls. Our average response time for emergency calls remained about five minutes and 5.4 minutes, which is within our goal is to be five minutes, but our real, we know that we need to stay under six for all those calls. So we'd like to be a little bit quicker, but we also want to be as safe as we can possibly be. For this year, we're going to resume life safety surveys. That's our building inspections. We're going to resume public education efforts. We've already done that, and the building inspections and pre-fire planning has already begun as well. We're going to complete the fire station location planning process. Our plan is to develop an equipment replacement plan that's very real, and again, just like in facility maintenance, year-over-year, near-level funding so that we know that we don't have, land on a year where we need an engine and a ladder truck at the same time, but that we've looked 20 years out at reasonable replacement schedules and so that we can have pretty level funding across that expensive equipment that we buy. Our plan is to seek grant funding for staffing and equipment with Your Blessing and also to initiate the Texas Fire Chiefs Best Practices Recognition Program, which is an accreditation process, and so. So our challenges, aging apparatus and facilities, I've beat on that for the last 14, 15 years, and you've all heard it over and over, our lack of a dedicated training facility. We have, for the entire time that I've been back, which is almost 15 years, not had a building that we can burn in to train our firefighters and to keep our firefighters' skills where they need to be, and that creates a real challenge for us. Our focus on COVID-19 prevention, response, and safety over the last year really took away from our core mission, and we're slowly getting back to complete normalcy there, I hope. We have a need for improved communication and partnerships with the community, and we're working really hard on that, and so that's where we're at. Obviously, the last year, we went, we did COVID questions and answers and call centers into COVID testing and then into COVID vaccinations. We've done a lot. As of yesterday afternoon, we still have only five patients in the two hospitals with COVID and none in the ICU, so we're in a really good place. I'm very hopeful that we can stay there. We're still doing our vaccination efforts, and those are ongoing. We'll be at Mr. Bolden's church at Antioch Baptist on Thursday from 4:00 to 8:00 for a hot dog party and vaccinations, and then I'm excited to announce that on August 12th, Pilgrims Pride is sponsoring a vaccine push, and they'll be giving away chicken and a chance to win a year's supply of meat if you come take a vaccine. So there'll be a lot more to follow on that, but Pilgrims has really, has been just an absolute great partner throughout the last 12 months, and they're going to continue doing that. The fire division has 60 and a half full-time. The Fire Division has 60 and a half full-time employees. I am one of those. I am not the half, you can look up here until I actually make up 1.5 employees. And we are fully staffed at this time. So as of this week, we are back to full staffing, so. Our organizational chart, each of the shifts is commanded by a battalion chief. That's the shift commander. They work 24-hour days, just like the firefighters at our five stations do. And so they do the operational, day-to-day operational things. They're the incident commander, they do the payroll, they do discipline issues. They take care of all those things and make sure the firefighters have what they need to do their jobs. We also have a division chief, emergency management coordinator, who's over a number of things, and a division chief who is the fire marshal, Michael Brown. And we have our business coordinator, our fire services coordinator and an intern. And that's about it. Our proposed budget for this year includes some built-in increases that finance plugs in for personnel services. We do have an increase requested for supplies and materials. That's due to just, that's the things that we buy to do our jobs every day. And so those costs have gone up, but also we have a number of things that just need to be replaced, from saws to, to fans to fire hose and just those things. So there's a, what I think is a modest increase there. And then there's, shows a slight decrease in contractual services. But that's reflective of the budget amendment to do the fire station location study. And so it's really, we're really level funded there as well. So year-over-year, we have pretty close to level funding with the exception of the Personnel Services Cost of Living Adjustment. Now we get to the really, really exciting page and I'm going to start from the bottom here. We would like to apply for a staffing grant from FEMA later in the year when that grant is announced. FEMA has for the last two years funded 100% of the first three years of new firefighters' salaries and benefits. And so if we were able to get that grant, which we would come back to council with the specifics of the grant when it's, when it's announced, we would like to, to ask to apply for three firefighters. The station location study showed very clearly that we were understaffed for the number of stations and positions, even if we went to four stations, to be able to have enough employees. And this would give us an opportunity over a three-year period with 100% federal funding to, to prepare to take on the cost locally. In the, prior to the past two years, it was a more gradual grant. It was 75% that kind of stepped down, but the last two years, it's been 100%. So if that comes back in that manner, we'd like to come back and ask you. So this is just a tickler to let you know that, hey, I may be back asking for that. We have a regular vehicle replacement that's in our, just in our standard vehicle replacement. And then we have a ladder truck and you can see that that's a relatively large number. We had budgeted or had planned and it's been in our budget supplemental since the very beginning to ask you to approve a new ladder truck in the next fiscal year's budget. Currently, a ladder truck takes 13 months to build from the day you order it. And so it's, that's a long, drawn-out process. A month ago, our ladder truck was involved in an accident and Friday, we received the repair estimates of $122,000 to fix our 25-year-old ladder truck. We estimate the value of the ladder truck to be between $35,000 and $60,000 at present. And we did that by going on some used fire truck websites and looking at what a comparable fire truck is selling for and they're selling for 35,000 to 60,000. To repair the one that we have, it's going to cost 122,000. So we're confident that insurance is going to total it. They have not responded and told us that as yet. But I'm confident that they're going to tell us that the ladder truck is totaled and if we want to fix it, they'll, they'll pay us a fixed sum, the actual cash value, the day before the accident. That ladder truck has 158,000 miles on it. It's a 1996 model, so it's 25. It has 16,800 hours, which is the mild equivalent of about 840,000 miles. So it's, it's served us well for a long period of time. In the last four years, we've averaged over $15,000 in vehicle maintenance on that ladder truck. Some years more, a lot more, some years a little bit less. But what concerns me the most is over the last four years, it's been out of service for 190 days. It's 190 days over four years that it couldn't serve the people that we, we bought it to serve. And that's just because we have a 25-year-old ladder truck. It's just, it's just old and it's worn out. So tonight, I come before you with, with three options, I guess. And I guess option one is we do nothing. Option two would be that we figure out how to patch this one back together and just see how long we can keep it on the road. But the three options that I would like for you to consider are repair the ladder truck, which will take about 120 days, rent a ladder truck in the interim. And then in October, after the new budget starts, order a new ladder truck with a delivery date expected sometime before Christmas of next year. Option two would be to rent or purchase a temporary truck. So go buy a $50,000 ladder truck and order a new truck now and we could have it delivered by February 22nd of next year, if we ordered one in the next 15 days. Option three is, would be to purchase a demonstrator truck, a truck that's, that's available now or it was available as of this afternoon. It's got about 12,000 miles on it, but it's been going fire department to fire department across Texas demonstrating it. All of those have a very, very comparable budget number. The finance, the, the number is, is going to be about the same, somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.48 million plus some equipment, so it's going to be right at a million five. The, the loner truck, I mean, sorry, the demo truck with 12,000 miles. The reason it's the same price as ordering a brand-new one is that we traditionally would buy a little, some less expensive options on a fire truck. And because it's a demonstrator, they had some more expensive options on it that we just traditionally don't buy on our fire apparatus. And so we're find ourselves in kind of a, a bad position. We knew we needed to buy a ladder truck. Our plan was to, was to hopefully get one funded in October. We find ourselves in a position where I think we need to do something much more quickly than that. We have not rented a ladder truck for the last month because college is out. Although our insurance will cover rental, it only has, has a limited number of days that they'll cover a rental vehicle. And so our plan, if we're going to repair our vehicles, to wait right up until the day before college comes back and rent a ladder truck so that when the, when we have eight or 10,000 more people in town, that we're better prepared to serve them. So I'll be happy to answer any questions about that because I.
Ms. Anderson?
Not yet.
Okay.
Are you looking for feedback already on the one, two, three?
Yeah, absolutely. We, we have to do some, we have to make a, we're in a position that very quickly, we need to make a decision about a ladder truck. It certainly doesn't have to be tonight. But as time goes on, our options kind of narrow a little bit. We need a ladder truck at some point. So I want to make sure you have heard this and if we need to bring it back at a future council to discuss it more, then that's certainly a great idea.
To me, it seems like spending $122,000 on fixing a ladder truck that is worth a lot less than that doesn't make a ton of sense to me.
And obviously, we're not asking you to vote on this tonight or to make a decision. We'll, we'll be back. We just need to get a little guidance of what direction you guys want us to go.
And, and my concern is the same as Ms. Fisher. Especially for the timeframe, you're going to have it after it's repaired and then you're going to order another new ladder truck, correct? And that, did you say that if you ordered a new ladder truck, it would be around December, some timeframe? Did you receive it?
So if we, if we order one in October, there's a 13-month build. One of the dealers that, that we deal with has a demo truck that's slated to be done in February. So they already have one programmed into the production cycle that was going to come off as a demo truck, just like the one, the demo they have now. But, but it's on the cab that we would traditionally buy, which is a little scaled-down version and we would still have the time to put the options that we needed into that truck because it hasn't gone into production yet. So the timeline for that truck is a little shorter because it's already in the production schedule. If we just go and order one cold, it's about 13 months. So it would be December of next year.
The ladder truck, we have to buy smaller to fit it in our garage, is that right or not?
So we actually have, well, yes, sort of. We, we, we're limited to buying a mid-mount tower instead of a rear-mount tower. So if you drove by and saw the, the retired Humble fire truck sitting out back when our old one was getting repaired last time, it would not fit in the station. So, but if they mount the ladder where it pivots from the middle of the truck instead of the rear of the truck, you actually dramatically decrease the height. And that also because of low-hanging trees and the nature of our community, that's something that we definitely want to, want to take advantage of is that lower height.
The repairs is, that's needed right now, is that keeping the truck out of service? Ladder truck out of service?
Absolutely. So it was involved in a crash a month ago and that motor vehicle accident needs, yeah, it's, it's definitely out of service.
But if the repairs are done, does that put that ladder truck back in service for good?
No, we still have a 25-year-old ladder truck and I would still ask for one in October. I, I mean, the service life on a ladder truck should be 15 to 18 years optimally in an environment like we run them. In Houston, it may be 12 to 15 years. Here, it's 15 to 18 and ours is 25.
Okay, you got my attention, thank you.
I didn't have any gray hair when we bought that truck and I was here.
Thank you.
Now, as I understand it, the, there is a currently-used demo that we could buy and it's just, or am I, am I just confusing that with what would be available in February?
No, no, so there's, there is currently in Texas, our dealer that we buy Pierce fire trucks from has had a demo fire ladder truck that's basically what we're specifying or what we're asking for. That's been in Texas since November. In fact, it came here, our firefighters operated it and it's been really going all over Texas demonstrating the truck. And you know, you don't have a, you don't have a car lot like a down Chevrolet where you can go look at the different models. And so the dealers continually keep three or four different kinds of trucks that are just circulating the state to show the fire department. So there's not a lot you can go to to just look at them and kick the tires. And so that demonstrator is, is coming off being a demonstrator now. They do that until they get just under 12,000 miles and then they sell them. And that's just the point that it, it reached that point at the end of last week, so.
If I'm hearing you correctly, I think that sounds like your preference is to go ahead. And I mean, if you could have all, if you could do it how you wanted to. Because it has a few more extras, even though it's the same amount or close to the same price.
So my absolute preference would be that we would not have a crashed ladder truck and that costs $122,000 and that we would keep driving what we're driving and that we would try to order one of these, this one that we could get in January. That would be my absolute preference. But at this point, we have to have a ladder truck and we can't go a, a year and a half. We can't go, you know, and I don't think we could go nine months without having that piece of equipment. Well, we rely on Lufkin, that's the closest one. And so, you know, for an interim, they'll, they'll come anytime we call, but it takes them about 40 minutes to get here. And so we just know that that's a severe limitation. And so at this point, my absolute preference as a citizen is that, that we would, that we would buy that demo if the council's open to that idea. Again, as the fire chief, I'd rather order what we order and keep things a little more consistent. But as of right now, our best option is probably that.
And that would, the configuration would actually fit in the fire station?
Absolutely. So really, the only thing that's changed is that there are a few upgrades and it's a different cab design. So the cab is a little wider, it's a little different than what we traditionally buy, but it, it would definitely fit in the station.
That demo, is there now open bid in for it or are we first in line?
So somebody could have bought it in the last three hours. We, we've had conversations with our vendor about the specifications for many months, talking about, talking about sort of what we're looking for with two vendors. And so we just knew that ladder truck was out there and so, so we reached out and said, hey, how long before that demo comes off of being a demo? And they said, well, it did last week. We didn't, we weren't, we didn't have enough information to make any recommendations until Friday afternoon when we got this estimate on the repairs. We didn't know if it was going to be $30,000 in repairs or 122,000. And so now that we have that, we, we have a little more information to go on, so.
So we need to be in a decision-making pretty quick.
So if we, if we want to go the route of that demo, we do have, I mean, obviously, I don't have a timeline, but it's, it's somebody else, another city could step up and, and be in a similar position to us and make that decision. I don't, I don't know.
And then we would be forced to either rent or fix the one that we, that got run into.
So we, right, and so, so whatever vendor we buy the new ladder truck from will help us out on a rental. They always take trade-ins. And so there's a perpetually kind of revolving door of old ladder trucks like the one that we have without the, without the telephone pole damage. But yeah, so that's, that's what we would probably do. From the time school gets in, insurance will cover a portion of that period and then I would come back with a proposal to recommend renting one. We're currently asking around, looking for those rental opportunities and pricing so that we have some idea what that would actually look like. After a conversation today with one of those dealers, he indicated that we could probably, if we were pretty careful about it, buy a used fire ladder truck now and in 12 months, trade, or when the new one came in, trade it into them for, for almost the same price. That they don't, once they're, once they're 20 years old, they don't depreciate quite as fast as they do the first 12 years, so.
Where does the money come from? Do we finance it? What, what do we do, surplus?
So we, I think we have a lot, a number of options, Pam, do you want to?
Yes, okay, so at this point, we do have several options. Of course, we do have some reserves available if, if you decide you want to pay cash for it. We do have sufficient reserves to do that. That is going to take a pretty big chunk out of the reserves, but we do have that available. We can do a lease purchase. That is going to involve us finding additional operating money to pay those, those lease payment fees, but that is definitely something that we can, we can, we can do. And then also there is, if you'll recall, several years ago, we issued tax notes to fund the new radio tower and radio system. Those were going to be paid off within the next nine months, I believe. Those would be, it was like a $1.6 million tax note for that. So those are going to be coming off. So there is money available through your, our, our debt service and our property tax rate that this would be pretty much just a replacement of that, so it's an extension of that payout. That last one was a six-year, I believe, tax note. So I have reached out to our financial advisor, John Martin, to, to get us to run those numbers for y'all. So at this point, we do have several options. So, you know, it, it just depends on, on if you want to pay cash, if you want to do a lease or if you do want to issue tax notes to, to fund that. So we will have some more details for you on the financial side when we come back to you with, with the big ask. And so I'm not sure if we'll be able to do that on the 20th or if it'll be the first of August, that meeting, but yeah. August first meeting, I think it's the third, is that right?
So, so, so depending, depending on which direction council wants to go, August could work. We'll have to look at, we'll have to look at that. I, I, they're not going to hold a fire truck for, for until August, but, but if it's still there, it's still an option, so, absolutely.
We will have, we will have some, and as I get that information, I guess I, we can share that, doesn't necessarily have to be, we'll, we'll get you what our options are prior to y'all having to make that decision, yes.
Anything else?
I just wanted to say we, we all really appreciate all the work you've done to try to figure this out and for us, so thank you.
Well, and I apologize for springing it on you. I, obviously, we didn't know anything until Friday and it took the last, you know, the last two workdays to try to come up with a cohesive idea of what direction we needed to go and, and to come up with some options that we could present to you guys.
We had some hints, I feel like, that this was coming. It wasn't a total surprise.
I, I know, I was at.
I dreamed about it.
I was going to stand here and ask you to put the money in the budget for October, absolutely. But, but at this point, I, I, moving it up makes a lot of sense to me, so.
I did have a quick question, sort of weighing the pros and cons of the different options. Primarily, you know, getting the one that's already in, in sort of the production cycle that would be available February, late February, I believe you said, versus getting the demo. Given the number of miles and, you know, rough calculations, 1,000 hours on the, the power plant on that demo, doing the tours and so forth, how much life does that take out of operational life for us?
I asked that question today and the response that I got was that frankly, these are very complicated pieces of equipment. I mean, there was a lot of moving parts, a lot of electronics. And the idea that it's got 12,000 road miles that are all sort of highway miles is probably a really good thing for the engine and the transmission and the, because the little short starts and stops, one-mile responses are the hardest things on a fire truck.
Biggest for entertainment, certainly.
And then the other thing is that because it's been on the road about seven months or so, it's been operated so many times that any little kink or any little thing that wasn't right coming out of production has already. has already been repaired and fixed. Um, and so I feel good about that. The other thing that happens uh, is that the warranty period begins the day you purchase a demo, um, as if it were a new one. And that the mileage warranty um, is extended by the number of miles that are on the odometer the day you get it. And so.
What is the warranty, out of curiosity?
So there's a hundred-thousand-mile uh, engine and powertrain warranty and then a two-year everything else warranty. And then a twenty-year paint warranty, which is why they stay so darn shiny. And you see an old fire truck and you think it looks brand-new. Um, it's because of firefighters with wax and a really expensive paint job. Uh, but uh, so every component is warranted a different length of time. Um, a fire truck is much less like a Chevrolet where Chevrolet builds all of it. Uh, fire truck is you buy a Spicer rear end and an Allison transmission and they assemble all the different parts from from the different manufacturers, so.
So we, even with what it's been through at this point, we could easily get certainly that eighteen-to-twenty-year lifespan out of it that you discussed.
I really like to say the fifteen-to-eighteen-year lifespan, uh, Mr. Anderson, and so, um.
Well, we're not Houston yet.
So I think fifteen to eighteen is very reasonable and I think twenty is within range. And what I would do is program that in year eighteen or year seventeen, we start really, you know, we we know now, seventeen years from now, we need to be thinking about a ladder truck. And if we have to push it a year, uh, we should have a truck that can stay alive and do that. Um, and if we don't have to push, you know, the, I mean, I think we need to to just go into it knowing that this is an item that has to be replaced. It's it's uh, it's just like your car at home, only you probably don't keep them eighteen years.
Okay.
So you still think the best option is the demo?
The demo.
The one about in February.
Well, and you know, wait.
No, the demo available now.
We we would have to factor in the cost of renting something during the time, even to late February. That's significant, I'm sure.
So the money that they take off of the demo basically covers the additional cost of of the upgraded uh, chassis, cabin chassis.
Right, so it levels out with what we would get in February. And so your preference, you think the best option is still a demo, not the February?
And not doing the rental.
Not.
So I I do. I think I think the best option is getting the demo as quickly as possible. Um, but I think the next best option is making a decision as quickly as possible and getting, trying to get that February truck uh, and then renting one for a shorter period. I think that renting something for fifteen or sixteen months seems like an awfully long time. Okay, so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up Municipal Court, Judge Heather Watts. How are you tonight?
Fine, I'm here.
Good.
There it is, okay. Am I still in the same? One, no. Let's see. Okay. I appreciate that. That would be great. I'm not the best with this. Great. Alright, so hi, I'm Heather Watson. I'm the Municipal Court Judge and this is the budget presentation for the Municipal Court. Okay, so um, we start with our accomplishments and future goals. Um, in the spring of twenty-twenty, the Municipal Court transitioned into a virtual court. Um, over the past year, our cases have been given virtual hearings through Zoom. We have Zoom hearings approximately four to five days per week and the Zoom format has worked really well for us. Um, we've had everything from bench trials to contested hearing and and all of our cases are handled through Zoom. For those defendants that do not have Zoom access, we provide free Zoom access at the court. As you can see from the picture here, we were installed protective glass, um, that we were able to do through the CARES Act. And that allowed for in-person hearings and jury trials. We are um, looking at having jury trials again this fall as soon as we um, get the okay from the Office of Court Administration. We are currently in the process also of contracting with the Department of Motor Vehicles under their SCOTF law program to stop vehicle registration by defendants who've not taken care of their tickets at court. So the Office of Court Administration is currently urging municipal courts to remain remotely if possible and to remain hybrid courts. This means that some hearings will be via Zoom and other ones can be in-person because we do have the protective glass. This slide shows the operational data of the Municipal Court. Cases filed at the court are primarily filed by NPD. And this shows a number of cases that have been filed by NPD over the past four fiscal years. Of course, this fiscal year's not finished. Um, so the fiscal year twenty-one is shown with cases through the end of June. As you can see from the chart, this fiscal year, we are currently at approximately twenty-four percent of the volume of cases that were filed by NPD in twenty-eighteen. There have been service level changes over the past year at the court. Before COVID, the court had in-person proceedings only. During the entire pandemic, the court staff continued to work at the court and process tickets, answered phone calls and emails, and we processed payments. As I previously stated, we are a hybrid court and we're transitioning now from Zoom hearings into in-person hearings. There are currently four and a half employees at the Municipal Court. Um, there's myself and I have three clerks. We also normally have a part-time bailiff and you can more easily see that on the next slide through our organizational chart. This year, we have um, been able to hire that third clerk, which has been um, wonderful. And more able then to move one person up to a head clerk position. So this is the proposed budget, our revenue. The Municipal Court is not a court of revenue. Um, instead, we're a court that focuses on justice for the individual defendants. However, each year we are as, we are asked to estimate um, revenue. Estimated revenue is based on the volume of cases that might be filed by NPD and then you apply historical data. The court does not have control over the number of cases that are filed. But the proposed revenue projections for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two total four-hundred thousand. Even though five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand was projected for funds and fees this year, this year's actual estimated revenue is only three-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. This falls short of the projected revenue for the current year. Why is that? As shown on the previous slide, um, we, the court only had a percentage of the estimated volume of cases that were filed. Um, this has led to a decrease in the court's revenue, of course. And because if there are fewer cases filed with the court, then there is less revenue for the court. These are the proposed expenses for the court. Um, the court's proposed budget for expenses for the next year totaled two-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty dollars. While this is lower than fiscal year twenty-nineteen, it is an increase from the past two years. And this is mostly due to increased expenses for personnel. Do y'all have any questions? And I'll be glad to go back.
Ms. Beldrich, yeah?
Um, yes, on that uh, top line.
Sure.
So the expenses in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, the personnel expenses were over three-hundred thousand. And they dropped, I guess, because of COVID or what? And now if they're going back up, could you help me with that?
Yes, um, what it is, is they did, we did have more staff at that time. Um, and then as we lost staff, we did, we chose not to replace them because the volume of cases at the court were not quite as high. Um, and so we have actually upgraded the court in the past year. There was myself and there were two clerks. Um, and so that that would be the difference.
And did that, the income and the expenses, did they kind of complement each other? Because I know the the um, revenue had dropped and your expenses dropped at the same time.
I can back that up just a little bit. Um, it does, it does actually, um, are you asking, do we run over, like, do our, does our revenue exceed our expenses?
Or vice versa. I was just wondering how that.
Yes, yes, yes. We do tend to, um, if you looked at this, the revenue, it, we do tend overall to fund ourselves for the greatest part.
Thank you for answering.
Okay. Oh, absolutely. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Is there less staff required if you go hybrid?
Actually, um, hybrid's a little more complicated. We do not have, um, we don't have software that allows us to generate en masse notices. Each one of those are done individually. And so, and also then the the Zoom hearings themselves are much smaller because you can't call as many people on your little screen. Um, and so it actually, it takes takes longer and it actually takes a little more time and more staff in order to do it. But our numbers are low and and we have, um, we have a level at which if we reach that point of of already announced, I was like, okay, we would require another person. Um, but until that time, we were fully staffed at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Are we at the point that we uh, able to pay tickets online?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, we are, um, we are fully virtual. There's actually, you you would not, at the current time, there's no need for you to actually come into the court. You can pay your ticket online. We can answer any questions. We can send you paperwork virtually. Um, everything can either be mailed back to us or you can email it back to us. And we we completely transitioned over to where no one actually has to come to the court. However, as we transition back to in-person proceedings, um, that that won't be the case and they'll be required to come.
What are the restricted fund expenses?
Um, these, and Pam may have to answer these for me exactly, um, and so.
Um, the court has a a couple of things by state law that they have to collect, one being um, techno, there's a technology fund. Uh, there's a couple of new ones there this year, uh, Municipal Court Building Security Fund, which is what we we fund the bailiff position with. Um, there is a child safety fund and there's specifics. The state says what you can spend those monies on. We have two new ones, there's a jury fund and a truancy, um, something, something about truancy. We haven't set up any expenses on those. We are collecting those monies. And so those monies have to be kept separate. They can only be spent as the state allows. And so that's why they're separate from your normal expenses because we can't necessarily um, do exactly what we want to with that. We have to follow state law on on that. So there's a restricted revenue and a restricted expense and those kind of um, hopefully mirror each other at all times, so.
And that comes out of a ticket or whatever?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a per- a percentage of.
Percentage, right, okay.
And so when you get a ticket, you have both a fine and a court cost. The court cost, in essence, um, most of it goes to the state or it is broken down into these little state funds that they allow the city to keep um, certain monies for in order to spend it the way the state would like us to spend it. In addition to that, we also collect above-the-court costs as a fine and a lot of that goes to the city.
Thank you.
You said that when you guys transitioned back over to in-person in the fall, the online ticket-paying system will be no more?
Oh, no, 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 no. We will keep that right. No, absolutely. Um, we, in fact, we we hope to make that even more readily available. Um, we have been looking at options for your um, smartphone. Um, and as the city transitions with its website, we would like a button on our webpage where you can just push it and pay your ticket if you'd like to. We would like our webpage to be much, much more accessible. Um, especially when you talk about college-age kids and things like that. Um, they are not paper-based at all. And so, um, I recently had an intern ask me, you know, what is a fax machine? She didn't know. She didn't know what a Zerox machine was.
She makes fun of me for using.
Right. They don't, they don't know. Um, and so they they would like us to be more virtual and we are, we would love to accommodate that.
Okay, great.
Ms. Anderson, anything?
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you.
Mr. Bray, you can feel free to collect your frog.
I was just looking at that as something.
Is there a frog?
Yeah. And don't smush it.
Okay, yeah, do not.
Load this while the frog is distracting everyone.
Thank you.
Somebody's gonna have frog legs to sit in.
Okay, Economic Development, Ms. Philpott?
Yes. Mayor and Council, thank you. Larissa Philpott, I'm your Economic Development Director and also the President and CEO of Nedco. In twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, we obviously changed our focus a little bit from what I told you we were planning on doing. Um, but we did get a lot done. Um, we started our Spanish entre- entrepreneurship program, which has been incredibly successful. I think we've we've had three meetings so far. We started with with two attendees and our last meeting a couple of weeks ago, we had twenty in the room. Um, a big thank you to um, City Council Member Fisher and also City Manager Mario Canizares for um, helping facilitate that. I think it's been, it's been very well received too. And the the community members that have attended have been incredibly thankful for the participation. We also administered the Nat CARES Grant a few months ago. And just as a reminder, that was a grant that was facilitated through the Federal CARES Act that allowed us to fund, provide some emergency funding to small businesses. Continue to fight for I-sixty-nine funding. Um, that is going well. We have, um, you can see the construction on South Street and construction on fifty-nine, two fifty-nine will start in just a couple of years. So it's it's important that we continue to fight for that funding until we actually see construction on the ground. We worked very closely with SFA on an Economic Development Administration Grant for the Center for Applied Research and Rural Innovation. Um, this was a long grant process. It's still ongoing. That's why I said preliminary approval because it's not one-hundred percent finalized yet, but we feel confident it will be granted. Um, and this would provide funding to build essentially a a front door to businesses for SFA. So businesses could come to this facility, which would be um, out on um, fifty-nine North to to work with SFA. SFA would provide training opportunities for their employees. They would provide um, precise measuring equipment for manufacturing processes. Um, and really, it's it's not incredibly defined yet because um, Dr. Gordon wants the manufacturing and business community to tell him what they need. And so we'll we'll continue to refine that, but it's essentially reaching out into the business community to to allow all those resources we have at SFA better u- be better utilized in our community. We just recently had our first-ever Restaurant Week. We had about twenty restaurants participate. Um, formally, we had a lot more participate, I think, informally, and and they seemed to have a really good turnout. So we were excited about that. Continued our multi-year partnership with SFA and Texas A&amp;M University for um, our Kiwi Grant, which is development of a of a new commercial crop for Kiwis here in East Texas. We also kicked off um, development of a Technology Action Plan. And our kickoff meeting, in case you have not heard, will be on July nineteenth at six-thirty at the Civic Center. The um, goal of that plan is to collect data, on-the-ground data regarding broadband access. The maps that exist today are not as granular as they should be. They they are collected by census block. Um, even the maps, even the surveys that DECTCOP did a few months ago are not quite as granular as we want them to be. We wanna know, what does this beat at your house? Um, and where is that across the community? And that will allow us to draft an action plan for better access. The great news is there is actually a good amount of funding out there for broadband infrastructure right now. So we wanna be sure that we are essentially shovel-ready when that funding is released. We also, um, working with SFA, um, to have done a lot of work with the SFA Aviation Program at the AL Mangum Airport, which is, again, just as a reminder, one of our four targeted industries in our Industry Attraction Plan. Those industries are aviation, advanced manufacturing, healthcare, and IT. We also um, refocused our attraction efforts on the basis, on the basics for attraction of those specific industries. And also workforce attraction, if you remember that, that Industry Attraction Plan said, focus a little bit more on attracting the labor and less on specific industries and businesses to come here. We, in the future, in in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, really wanna work on a rebranding campaign. We've been using kind of the same brand and slogans and things like that um, for several years now and we're excited to to work on that and refresh that. Of course, supportive comprehensive planning, and that goes hand in hand in what I just said about workforce attraction. Um, if you build a community that people wanna live, you're you're building that workforce and that's that's a lot of what comprehensive planning is. We hope to perform a retail study. Our last retail study was done some time ago and it relied a lot on license plate studies. They'd drive to Walmart and they'd track all the license plates and see where they were registered to. Now they use cellphones. And that is night and day difference regarding accuracy because a a student that maybe lives in in Rask and comes to SFA every day may have parked at Walmart to buy, you know, a package of pens on their way to school. And so most of their retail dollars probably aren't spent here, whereas cellphones, we know exactly where those people are coming and going. Um, we participated with the Texas Workforce Commission just a few weeks ago on a retail study for a downtown store. And they were able to identify the place that customers went to before they went to that store and the. And they were able to identify the place that customers went to before they went to that store and the place they went to after they went to that store. Um, the data's out there. It's a little spooky, but if it's out there and other people are using it, we want to make sure that we can take advantage of it for our community as well. And the goal of that is to show what are our gaps? Why are people lose, leaving our community to go shop for? Um, I've mentioned the technology action plan. Um, also continuing along that entrepreneurship mindset. We focused on entrepreneurship classes in Spanish this year and we're hoping to expand that to other affinity groups. Meaning other groups that have something in common that would make them want to, want to work together and probably have similar problems and questions as well. Um, one thought is, and this hasn't been completely fleshed out yet, but, um, to work with veterans groups. And so we're excited about that. And then also targeted recruitment for targeted properties. In coming months and years, um, this will take a while because it's not a simple or an easy answer. We, as a community, really need to have a serious discussion about how we're going to adequately address the issue of getting sites ready for development. Um, how are we paying for the infrastructure to get them ready? How are we making them, once the infrastructure's there, how are we making them flat? How are we, um, working with the property owners to ensure when I get a site selector at my door, I have a list of properties that I can hand to that site selector? Um, other communities that, that fund economic development in different ways have a, a portfolio of properties they can control and that they can improve at the ready. And so we just need to work through that and figure out how we're going to address it. Luckily for the way we operate and the type of department that we are, we didn't have a huge change in service levels, um, because nearly everything we do, we can do virtually. So that was good news. Um, just kind of a change in philosophy and that was really due to that industry attraction plan and the changes that the pandemic brought. It really, really didn't change our day-to-day life. It changed how we did our business. 2020 really consisted of ensuring the survival of our small businesses and I think it was, was kind of a good thing. It brought us closer to home, um, had us focus on, on new partnerships, also developing new market data sources. We were forced to, to look at who we do have here in our workforce, what we are lacking, um, and also build those relationships with small businesses. As we came out of the snowstorm, um, site selectors seemed to kind of thaw out. It was really strange. We had no site selection activity in 2020, really the first quarter of 2021, it was still slow. And then in March, it just exploded. Um, that pent-up activity just absolutely, absolutely exploded. That pace has slowed down a bit, but I think that's due to just construction cycles and financial cycles. I think it will continue to be active and we will continue to have people wanting to locate businesses here. I've, I've had the opportunity to discuss several of those with you in executive dis- executive session and know that we're working, um, hard on, on landing those businesses. So like I said, we really didn't have service level changes. Um, we just refocused what we were doing and that was due to, to the pandemic and due to that industry attraction plan. We're a small department. We haven't changed in, in several years. Um, we have a great staff that does a lot with, with very, with a small budget, um, and they are very creative. We have, uh, Mary Frances Bradford is our business development manager, um, and Haley Chapman is our marketing assistant. They are a fantastic team. So as far as our revenue goes, our membership funding is essentially the same as last year. And when we propose budgets, know that we are projecting what we anticipate we will collect when we send out our billing invoices to those who are members and who we hope will become new members. We have seen those, those membership numbers deviate only a small amount since about 2006, probably plus or minus 15% from, from 2000, 2006 to today. And therefore raising revenue just to cover the increasing cost of doing business through membership continues to be a struggle. We essentially have reached just about everyone that we think we can. Um, we do have, with that said, we have a very solid membership base, um, that provides much more than just a membership fee. They, they are committee chairs. Um, the entrepreneurship committee, for example, is served by several of those, those, those members. Um, and they're also great community representatives. I can take any one of those Nedco members on a site selector visit or with a business that might need mentorship or something like that. They service, serve the city in a lot of different capacities. But you will see this year, we are requesting an increase of $25,000 from the city. The city has contributed $95,000 to Nedco since approximately 2006. And so to cover, um, some adjustments in salaries due to the market adjustment that was done in 2020, as well as some additional programming things that we, we need to do to get our job done, we are requesting that. And just as a reminder on that slide, um, the city provides about a third of Nedco's revenue. The county provides close to 10% and then the remaining, that, about 50% is membership funding. Our interest fluctuates from year to year. We had a really good year a couple of years ago, not so good this year unfortunately, and we have no control over that. In our proposed expenses, you'll see, um, majority of that is personnel, just like any, any personnel-driven department. Our administration costs remain the same. The increase in personnel is due to that market adjustment from December of 2020. We have a small increase in programming that we're requesting to pay for trade show attendance, workforce data services, going along with, with what we talked about, about making sure that we develop our workforce. We need to know who's in our workforce and we need to be able to very specifically, um, inform our site selectors of that. And then also more specifically inform our educational partners. If we can't tell them the skills that we are lacking in our community, they can't provide new training opportunities to, to fill those skills. And that is just our request showing the request, the additional, um, increase in contribution. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Ms. Anderson?
Um, I missed it on the slide, but there was a, since, uh, I think 18, 19, there was a significant decrease in administration cost. Now I was just curious as to the reason behind that.
Some of that is going to be, um, our move into City Hall. And we do appreciate, we, we estimate that to be about a $13,000 a year in-kind contribution. And so that includes office space, janitorial, um, utilities and internet access. And we're very thankful for that.
That answers my question. Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
I love the proactive approach to a lot of these things. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Oh, one of the items, uh, preliminary EDA funding for the Center for Applied Research. And when you speak of preliminary, is that, is it going to be done in phases? Or this preliminary is just amount and then they'll take it out on their own?
That actually refers to the way the EDA awards grants. You have to go through several different review cycles and I believe it's three separate review cycles. And we are in cycle two of three, essentially. And once you get to this point, unless something crazy happens, you're going to get funded, but I didn't want to guarantee it, um, until we have that final award letter.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there any, um, estimate of the income that's been brought, um, to the city from all of this work?
That is a very difficult number to calculate, um, because it might be, a business came to us with a, with a problem and we helped them solve and that business didn't close that day. It might be, um, a, a business that all we did was, was provide a, a connection to a Realtor to purchase a piece of property. It might be a business that we spent months and months and months on and came to you with an economic incentive package. So it's, we work with so many different businesses in so many different ways. It's very difficult for us to calculate that. Um, that direct return on investment. Typical 4A, 4B cities are able to say, we purchased this land, we sold it for this amount or we, we provided a million-dollar cash grant to this business and then they provided this much in tax revenue. We, we really can't quantify the way our return on investment works because we're more of a programmatic.
I know it's really difficult to do that, but I think it would be helpful if we could even move in that direction, even with some estimates. Um, and that just, that's just my, because I'm asked a lot of questions and.
Sure. And, and I, I will be honest, I have struggled with that since I came to Nedco. And, and Mayor Mize has been with Nedco, involved in Nedco a long time and it's, it continues to be a question. Um, we can showcase how many businesses open and close each year. We can showcase. Um, and I will give a, an economic perspective update in a few months and probably in the, in the late fall. Um, that will show economic indicators, that will show sales tax, um, how our sales tax numbers are looking, how our property valuations look. Um, our job growth numbers and things like that. But because we are not a project-driven economic development organization, I can't take a report of 10 different businesses and show, here's how they improved or didn't improve over a year. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Visitor Services, CVB, Sherry Morgan?
Good evening, mayor and council. Thanks. Our accomplishments and fu- and future goals for 2021, most of our accomplishments, um, were experienced. You know, we couldn't really promote safely for people to come in, so we turned an eye inward and looked at improving our infrastructure and in-house. Um, we executed, um, a COVID-aware drive-in movie, um, and tested out, flushed out that business model. And we were able to reach profits that we were able to reinvest back into special events and the concerts. We increased racial diversity representation in our print marketing and crafted socially responsible messaging amid the safety, uh, COVID safety protocols. We assumed the lead role in special events permitting for the city and implemented a new permitting process. Planned and executed an outdoor concert, which, if you recall, we came before council to broaden the scope of our work and council directed us to look at more outdoor music activities and cultural events. We created and maintained a digital inclusive community calendar that's available on our website as well as on our app. And we work every day to make sure that we are, um, getting the information from all community partners, so it is one-stop shopping. Uh, we created and maintained private Facebook groups for the hoteliers. The hoteliers are a very proprietary group. Um, they do not like to share their secrets or their, they don't like to share. Um, period. So, uh, creating, creating ways for them to have, um, safety and anonymity, but still be active in communication and getting the information that we needed them to have. And, um, social media is really good for that. So we've been working on that and improving that per their feedback so that it works for them. It doesn't really make a difference if it's one-sided. We want something that's mutually beneficial. We design and supply monthly and weekly promotional event collateral for hotel common areas. And then we started to organize partner relationships as things started to open back up to create stay-and-play packages for guests and visitors. So that the property is out by the expo center, we could partner those with events that were happening at the expo center. Future goals, we want to build more events with a cultural focus and are actively planning those. Um, seek private funding through grants or private foundations for the next tier of options for our Visit widget app. Um, that would include augmented reality functionality. We'd like to bring back the Nine Flags Festival. I would like to continue to coordinate our efforts with Parks and Recreation to grow in advanced sports tourism in Nacogdoches. Seek a more affordable CMS website host, uh, that also offers online ticketing functionality. We currently are with a provider called Simple View, which is an outstanding company. But it was, uh, approved at a time before I got here and the city went in half with the CVB and that is not a sustainable amount. It's a wonderful product. Um, but it's like giving a 16-year-old a Ferrari. I mean, there is a lot of functions, not that we're just not using, but we have no need for, but they're great functions. They're just not really nuanced us and there are more affordable options out there. We currently have a community filming room in our basement, um, that is not being utilized. So we're looking at converting that over, um, into a podcast studio, similar to one that Visit Tyler has just launched. And then producing a monthly Visit Nacogdoches podcast. And lastly, we'd like to create and maintain a database, a database that would match up mural artists with businesses who are eligible for and desire to have a mural installed on the outside of their building in an effort to build up our inventory of interesting and iconic photo backdrops. Operational and service level issues, repair demands on our beautiful building are becoming prohibitively costly. Recovery of tourism is still an unknown variable after the pandemic. Our current hotel and convention space just puts a cap on, uh, the number and size of meetings that we qualified to bid. It's not a bad thing, but if we ever wanted to grow that particular aspect, we would need to look into feasibility studies about an additional, um, hotel and convention center. But with the space that we have now and the way that convention goers want to travel, um, what we have is what we have. Guaranteed remittance of local hotel occupancy from short-term rental properties within city limits requires individual legal agreements with each rental platform, so Verbo, Airbnb, et cetera. And those, uh, attaining those are timely and difficult. Several postponed conferences are not eligible to reschedule just due to their site selection process. And current funding for large-scale special events is limited. Service level changes, in a nutshell, pre-COVID, we really looked at 50-mile perimeter and beyond for what we did. Um, post-COVID or during COVID, uh, we turned more towards a community focus. And now post-COVID, we are finding a very comfortable middle ground, that it doesn't have to be an either or, it's not that binary. We really can find a nuanced groove that benefits the residents of Nacogdoches as well as welcomes visitors in. The chart is, um, shows you hotel occupancy from October till May for 2019, or 2020, 21 is the first one and then October, May of last year. So you can see the recovery for sure in the purple and move tones. We're doing really well. Our staff is four and a half for a full-time and a part-time accountant. We are requesting no additional employees at this time. Organizational chart, much like Nedco, we have a board of directors and the city manager that I report to. Our director of sales and promotions is Joanna Temple. Our creative content director is Ashley Morgan. Mike Bay is our coordinator of guest services and Cheryl Bartlett is our part-time accountant. On our revenue, the occupancy line at the top, that's a forecasted number, um, that Ms. Kerbo provides for us and that's based on the best information that we have before us. Um, patterns of remittance. And any, uh, any major occurrence that might be impacting tourism one way or the other. So is there, are the Olympics going to be held? Is the World Series of Baseball going to be here? Is there something coming down the pike where we could expect, um, a peak or a divot? City subsidy, um, is that stair-step approach? So from 108, 108,000 last year to 66,400. And then you can see the rest of the forms of income through brick sales, interest income, much like Larissa, we had a really, uh, pitiful $150 in interest income. Um, our merchandise sales and then miscellaneous events, donation, things like that. We're for a total budget this year of 548, 850 and that does include a draw from our reserves of 23,600. of 23,600. Our expenses, personnel, 327, 805. Administrative cost, that does include the licensing for our website and our app at Our sales and marketing, our, our biggest line items are always marketing and personnel services. And you can see in 2018, 19, we had a marketing budget of 177,000 and that had been about where we were for a good, long while. And of course, we, you can see the reductions in the marketing as the years progressed. So we are showing an increase to 134, which is quite appropriate for the rate of recovery that we're seeing. And so the budget balances. And I'm prepared to take any questions.
You mentioned the building expenses being high. What kind of things are you seeing?
We had flooding in our basement twice. That was actually due to roofing problems. There was a loose seal. We had to replace an air conditioner condenser that was out of warranty, so that was $10,000. It's just the, the things that are going wrong with the building at this point as it ages, they're just natural, but they're just the more costly ones.
Okay. And then I know there's an initiative to collaborate with Lufkin on tourism. Tell us some about that.
Yes. So in the spirit of cooperation that was initiated with you and Mr. Canizares with Lufkin leadership, we are, on August the 9th, we'll be having a Reach Across the River Travel and Tourism Summit where we invite the tourism interests of both destinations. They're going to be coming here and will be receiving direction and expectation from the city managers of Lufkin and Nacogdoches as well as the mayors. And then we'll have a working lunch where we combine our missions, our goals and sort of find some commonalities, then take inventory of the assets that we have to contribute and then share opportunities and expenses. So hopefully we'll be able to really compound that increase in the marketing budget by sharing with, with our neighbors.
Right. Anybody have questions?
Sure, I have.
No, sorry.
The augmented reality thing, was that what you were talking about at the last council meeting where, okay, so is this like a new thing that people are into? Like why, why is this one of the stated, and I think I'm just, I just don't get it?
It's not new, if you're into, to technology at all.
Not.
But, you know, the big thing now with the youth are virtual reality video games now, so you put on a headset and you're in the video game and it's really weird. It's kind of fun to watch on the outside, but, so it's basically that. It's for the price that we were given, if we were to bring, bring in the company and do six sites, we could do them for $1,000 per site. And it's just providing a different point of access to our historical assets, which might help us share those with a demographic that on the face value might not
Okay.
take any interest in it. So, and it, it helps keep our stories alive. So if the CVB went away and Mike Bay wasn't able to tell people that the Stone Fort used to be right across the street, then eventually people are only ever going to know that as CBTX and
Right.
not know its history. So part of our responsibility and what we get to do is to keep our stories and to tell our stories. And that responsibility extends into making sure that we're telling tellable stories that are interesting.
Okay, that's helpful. You mentioned that the guaranteed remittances from Airbnb and the short-term, those properties are, it's difficult. Are we in the process of doing that?
Yes.
Are we trying? Okay, all right, okay. Because it seems like, well, I mean, I don't know statistically if people generally like to stay in Airbnbs versus hotels and how, how that data ends up playing out, but when we look to stay at other places, it's definitely one of, one of the options that we look at. And so I wonder how much money we're losing out on.
We have, we have access to numbers just like we get from the STAR report, the Smith Travel Research Report, to have that for short-term rentals as well. And at the time that I pulled the data for my mid-year report, in Nacogdoches County, there were 89 active short-term rental vacancies. And of those, the problem comes in, we don't get their addresses. We get dots on a map that are maybe 200 feet plus or minus from where it is. So it's that anonymity that's built into all of these legislation, legislative pieces that stop us from being able to track them down and, and just educate them that they need to. Not for a second do we think that they're trying to maliciously not fulfill their requirements. It's just they don't know. They just, they think, oh, I have an extra room or we've got the guest house, the pool house.
Right.
Yeah. So you don't know what you don't know. But probably about half, less than half of those, I would say like 30 are inside the city limits and would qualify to need to remit.
Okay.
But a lot of those are, the bulk of those are out in the county.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do you want?
Yes. Could you go back to the first slide? Oh, sports, let's see. Sports tourism
Mm-hmm.
in Nacogdoches. And I, I look at that as being maybe soccer tournaments, baseball, softball tournaments. Do we have to, do we have the facilities to accommodate those type of events?
Yes and no. Some of the smaller tournaments, yes. So Pony League, girls softball, we are probably, that would probably be the closest baseball-y, softball-y one. But the soccer and the things like that, no, we're not there yet. But there is a Parks Master Plan that does allow for that. So as we improve our infrastructure and if we improve it in ways that it's geared towards that eventuality, there is a lot of revenue to be generated from that. And I think most recently, Center played host to the World Series of Little League or they had a big, and we saw hotel stays, you know, from that. So there's no excuse. If Center could do it, certainly Nacogdoches can do it, but it's just, there's a limited amount of money and a lot of different places that, that need it. So it's just when we can build that infrastructure. We do have things like our disc golf. We are really, we have a great reputation for our disc golf courses and so that is a market that we are actively going after.
Okay, thank you. One other thing, one of the bullet items, it says increase racial diversity representation in the print marketing and et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
Is racial versus diversity? And to me, that's two different things. Diversity could be handicap, people with disabilities, LGKBTQ and all of that. Is that also in print?
Yes, sir. Generational is something that we look at. We want everybody to feel welcomed
Comfortable, yeah.
and know that they are, that this is a welcoming environment.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Bellger?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sheri. We're about an hour and a half in. Are y'all okay? Do you need to stop for a second? Are we good to go with three to go?
Hmm, let's go.
Keep going. Okay. All right, Police Services Division, Chief Seavy.
She's taking a break. It's gonna be about an hour and a half.
You gotta out to the fire department.
Yeah, have to. Okay. All righty. Jim Seavy, Police Department. I'll be talking about the Police Department and Airport Budget this evening. As we go through this, I, I really hope you would stop me to ask questions because a lot of information and I'll, I'll try to answer your best, your questions to the best of my ability and if I don't know the answer, I'll make up something really plausible. So let's talk about, talk about the Police Department first. 2021 accomplishments and future goals. Activated Emergency Operations Center, successfully implemented ICS with other city departments. This was a huge operation located at the Police Department, multi-days, multi-agencies in every department within the city. I would like to tell you that what came out of this is absolute dependence on one another, smooth operations, as smooth as it can be during a time of emergency and all the various departments and agencies really, really worked together quite smoothly. It was more like a family environment and I was really pleased and proud of how that all came together. We are, we, we improved our sex offender process by expanding compliance checks. We've now involved patrol officers to do unannounced compliance checks. That's working out quite well. And we've had, no secret, we've had problems with retention and recruiting. We, we developed and began an entirely new process for recruiting. And once upon a time, we would announce a test date, we'd test people, then we would announce other dates for interviews and other processes and those things rocked along week after week. Well, now, and, and for the past year or so, if someone wants to apply to our department, we jump on it. We, we process their application, we, we provide testing services and material and we get them through the process as quickly as we can, try to identify the best applicants that we can and get them where they are hirable. And as a result of that, our communications is fully staffed, now Communications Division. We've been fully staffed in, in the 15 years that I've been here, we were fully staffed once for 30 days. And now we're approaching, we're, we're approaching a happy place with our staffing and it's, and it's because I think we have adapted to this new environment of, of, of understanding that potential employees, it's customer service issue. So we need to treat them like we do anybody else in, in that, that they have the, the potential of, of coming to work here. We want to provide them with that, that service of, of getting them through the process as quick as they can. After all, they're looking for a job. They need a job and if we can provide that for them, we're happy to do it. Future goals, achieve full officer staffing in 2020, 2021. Probably won't be full staff, but we're getting very close to that. Increase community outreach. Well, we are, we are instituting a number of new programs and we'll talk about that a little bit more as we go. Create benefits from newly formed Crime Intelligence Committee. This is an internal process where we have individuals within our department that work with other agencies, federal, state, and local, as well as, as internally from division to division to develop intelligence on, on criminal investigations. And we're, we're gonna flesh that completely out over the next year or so and develop benefits from that. Create a citizens on patrol program. We have a CERT program, which is an emergency, citizen emergency response team. We're gonna use that as a basis to get some of our citizens out, augmenting our on-duty staff. They will become eyes and ears. Really, what we're hoping for is that they will become exceptional witnesses for us. And, and we're gonna, we're gonna start having them participate in, in the everyday operations of the Police Department. Start a summer teen program. I've got there July 2021. That's because next week is our first summer teen program. It's a, it's like a teen police academy. We have a few openings left. If, if you know anybody that, that might be interested in this, they just need to contact our Community Relations Sergeant Brett Ayers and he can, we're, we're taking applications through this week. And next week, we'll kick this off and, and then we're, we're gonna learn lessons from this and expand it and, and do more. And our, our hope is that we'll, we'll generate friendship and positive relationships within, within the, the teen population that we have within our, within our community. So that's coming around next week and we're expecting big things out of that. Something that I want to expand a little bit more on is create a lake patrol officer position. We've had this position in the past, we've never, we've not been able to consistently staff it because of our staffing issues. So part of my presentation tonight is to talk about that lake officer and, and approve and get approval from the council to staff that position and also to purchase the equipment necessary to staff that position, which includes a boat. And the boat that I'm referring to is, some people think, my goodness, is it a, is it a gold-plated ski boat or what? It's an expensive item. It's about a $75,000 boat. So you're thinking, holy cow, you know, are we gonna charter this thing out in the Gulf or what? No, we actually brought Texas Parks and Wildlife out to our lake and asked them to look at our lake and look at the types of calls historically that we've had out there. And this is the boat they recommended. It's, it's mostly about service and safety. So this boat is 22 feet long, it has a catwalk all the way around it, it allows you to board other boats safely and to, to take objects out of the water. It's powerful enough that we can tow disabled boats from the lake and get them, to get them back safely. And it, it has equipment on it that makes it a little more comfortable for the lake officer to, to stay out on the water for long periods of time. The boat we have right now, before we take it out, every single time, we have to fix something on it. It's an old boat, it's got a lot of time on it and it needs to go away. And this also includes a structure to park the boat under at the water treatment plant. So what will the boat be used for? Well, obviously patrolling the lake, safety, we're gonna, we're gonna institute a public education program and we also assist the water treatment plant in some of their duties that, that are required at the lake. And here's the best part, the boat will be paid for by narcotics funds. This won't come out of the city budget. These are seized assets, forfeiture funds that, that have been seized as a result of, of investigations into criminal activities, primarily narcotics. So I'm not asking for you to spend money out of the city budget, I'm just asking you for to let, to let me spend money out of our forfeiture fund. And, and we'll be able to fully fund this, except for the personnel costs, you cannot use forfeiture money for that. But we'll be able to, to fully fund this from, from forfeited assets that, that we've been able to seize from, mostly from narcotics violations. So I'd like for you to think about approving that purchase and, and also the lake officer position that we'll need to put into that. Any questions on that? That's a big topic. If you have questions, of course, we can come back to it at any time, but I don't see any alarmed looks on anybody's faces at this point. So we'll go on. Another big topic, comprehensive management study. I'm meeting with a group on Monday who's going to conduct a management staffing study of the Police Department. That's going to include things like staffing levels, it's going to include services, it's going to include management of the department as well as procedures, directives, things like that. And it's a big, big, big project. It will include interviews with, with our local citizens, interviews with employees that are, that are confidential and at the, and by the way, it doesn't come to me for approval. So when I first talked to the guys, I said, of course, you'll send me everything so that I can change things to, to look good for us, right? And no, it does not. It's gonna go city manager. I, I won't see it until it's completed and turned in and I guess at some point I'll get to see parts of it. And, but we're looking forward to this and it's gonna include, a big component of this is gonna be community outreach. And part of that, a community outreach is going to include a piece of software that we're purchasing called Benchmark Analytics. And Benchmark Analytics is going to allow us to track individual employees, officers and non-licensed folks and we're gonna be able to, to see what they're doing on a day-to-day basis with their activity, be able to take a look at, at what they're doing, how they're be able to take a look at what they're doing, how they're doing their jobs. It will track complaints. It will track compliments. It will track just about every aspect of the officer's activities. It will have an early warning component in it. So the goal of an early warning component is that if an officer starts to show signs that may be getting a little off-track here and there, it will allow us to identify that and intervene before something bad happens. These have been around for a long time, but we've never had it here at the Police Department. So we are purchasing that software, again, forfeiture funds. And really pleased to get that piece of software up and running. We are very close to pulling the trigger on that. I expect sometime within the next three or four months, it'll be in place and operational. Really looking forward to that. Operation and service level issues, short staffing. I've already alluded to that a little bit. That's all areas. Special Operations, Detectives, Patrol, Communications, Non-licensed Areas. Over the past several years, we have suffered with a lot of staffing issues. Of course, we addressed that, and now we're coming back from that. But that short staffing has really affected every, every level of service that we've had. And at one point in time, I had nobody left in Special Operations, well, Special, in Street Crimes. Those are narcotics investigations and are special investigations that, in all honesty, they're too detailed to leave in patrol. But they don't quite fit in to CID where they can be investigated on an individual basis. So happy to start moving back into that area. It took our traffic unit from five down to one sergeant, one officer. Because of these specialty functions, we lose those when we get short-staffed in patrol because we have to staff the patrol function first and foremost. We were two down, and still are two down, in CID. So two investigators, two full-time investigators, in order to staff patrol. Coming back from that now and doing a lot better there. Pandemic brought about a lot less, a lot less public contact because, much like the Fire Department, we too were trying to control the spread of COVID- nineteen like everybody else was. So in whatever areas we could, we wanted to limit contact with the public. We still answered all the calls. We were still out there mixing it up in the streets on these calls for service. But whenever, whenever it was a choice, we really tried hard to limit our contact with the public. And that also meant a lot less training for our officers. And everything that was self-initiated had to be cut back because of this, understandably. So, of course, the ice storm of twenty twenty-one produced unprecedented challenges, things that we'd never seen. We had officers out helping street crews on some occasions. And we had a lot of officers working hours where they would work a twelve-hour shift and come back in and work another four to six hours just because it was a necessity and it was needed. And so much of this were things that are not traditional policing roles. And, but happy to help. And really, like I said before, the way that all the different departments and organizations came together was really, really, really amazing, something to see. Service level changes, March twenty twenty. Of course, everybody's talking about COVID- nineteen. I'm no different from that. Calls for service, traffic enforcement, proactive contacts, all handled in a traditional in-person manner were curtailed as much as possible. In April twenty twenty, the county jail limited offender intake. So we had to, we had to kind of think about detaining individuals on criminal charges. We instituted citations for misdemeanor offenses that normally people would have been jailed for. September twenty twenty, due to staffing shortages, COVID- nineteen. Specialty units were moved to patrol to supplement the roster, which is what I was talking about with Special Operations, Street Crimes, Traffic, things like that. And, but as of March of twenty twenty-one, officer proactivity resumed with caution. And as we move down the calendar, we're going to continue to reinstitute all of the pre-COVID- nineteen activities that we ever did. So we continue to utilize social distancing as much as possible, over the phone reporting, mask wear where appropriate, and decontamination techniques. So we continue with those things. Full-time employee summary, ninety-three. Full-time employees total, eight. Well, we have nine in Administration, eight field, CID, detectives, eleven. Fifty-one in patrol, eighteen dispatch, four records, for a total of ninety-three. And you can see the vacancies there. Those vacancies fluctuate almost week to week because we have retirements, we have new hires. So they're kind of coming and going, but this is a pretty good snapshot of where we're at. Current organizational chart, pretty straightforward. We have three divisions, Administration, Patrol, and CID. And there's the breakdown of our current org chart. This is a proposed org chart. We hope to implement this at some point in the future with a few added positions as those opportunities come available. We have been, we have been working with a lot of vacancies. And that continues to be a challenge for us. But at some point in time in the future, we're hoping to expand our operations and expand some personnel positions. Department proposed budget, you can see those numbers there. Twenty twenty-two proposed budgets, eight-point-four-two-eight million dollars. Supplies and materials, two-hundred-and-eighty-eight-six-fifty. I think, I think what I'd like to tell you there is that's everything. It's not the personnel and things like that or maintenance and contract services, but it's things like body armor, equipment, training, various supplies that we use. We do a lot of our own maintenance work. So that's, that's all those additional things that you tend not to think about so much. So eight-point-four million dollars. Supplemental packages, at some point in time, we're going to look at a quartermaster position. This is a full-time position at forty-eight thousand dollars. Alls that person would do, they would track every item. They would track all of our equipment, all of our supplies. They would conduct audits and inventories. We don't have that right now. Right now, we've got it spread out all over the department, Sergeants, Lieutenants, Assistant Chiefs, Officers. All participate in this process of tracking equipment and things like forfeiture funds and things like that. Of course, we work with finance on a lot of these things also, but we still have to track them ourselves and provide the information. A lieutenant, we have one lieutenant, one daytime lieutenant. We have a need for another one. So we have two lieutenants that work tonight. Without getting too much into the details, we have what we refer to as the front end and the back end of the week. So we have one lieutenant that works, I'm just going to make it easy, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and another lieutenant works Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Well, on the day shift, we only have one lieutenant. And we really have a need for another one. So we hand off those command staff duties to an on-duty sergeant, and we kind of bring people in and out of the mix as we need to. Our annual vehicle replacement stands at about four-hundred thousand dollars through our Vehicle Replacement Fund. Each year, we have patrol cars that come out of rotation, and they are auctioned off and replaced with new vehicles. That four-hundred thousand dollars a year includes the complete package. Emergency equipment, cages, radios, all of the gear that goes into a patrol car. And that's included in that four-hundred thousand dollar replacement, vehicle replacement fund total. For supplemental packages, five-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars for the year. And at this point, with this very nice picture at the end, if you have questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Ms. Bellinger.
Come back to me. I had one, and I'm trying to figure out where it is.
Yes, just a comment. Increase community outreach. Asking that you work very closely with the City Council, from that board, or basically any City Council member. And you mentioned sex offender protest compliance. Are they listed online?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
You can access that through the state website, also on our, on our website.
And you mentioned about Citizens on Patrol. And I guess one of the things sort of bothered me a little was you mentioned that they are expert witnesses.
That's what we're going to try to make of them, yes.
I don't know if, are they going to be armed?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, these, if they are, I certainly won't know about it. These are, primarily, we're going to use our CERT group to begin this. So basically, if they drive, they're out driving around looking for things, and we can give them assignments like vacation house watches and things like that. If they see something, they're going to call us. They're not going to handle anything. I don't want them getting out of the car. I don't want them confronting anybody. Certainly don't want them getting in car chases and shootouts. But, so they're, they're going to keep their eyes open. And we actually train them. We have little training events, and we talk about what makes a good witness. And what do you pay attention to? And how, I think the single biggest component of a Citizens on Patrol program is teaching everyone, officers in the, in the Patrol, Citizens on Patrol Unit, how they interact. And so that's going to be a big component of that, so.
Okay, well, let me make sure I understand. Now, the Citizen Patrol are those that's in their neighborhood. There's no one from another neighborhood going to go to neighborhood on the north part of town, and they live on the south part of town, right?
We're going to give them assignments. So they're not just going to be out kind of going here and there. We're going to have specific assignments and specific duties for them to be involved in.
Scary thought.
It is. I would say, though, that before I came here, when I was in Midland, we had a huge Citizens on Patrol. We had forty-eight of them. And once you learn how to use them, they are, they are really quite valuable. And they would come to briefings with the officers and go out. And they had radios, and they were able to talk to the officers over the radio. And if it's administered properly, it can be, it can be a huge helper.
So when you get a call from me saying, does this guy keep riding around in my neighborhood? I need him investigated.
We'll come investigate him. I'll say, get your gun out. We'll meet you there.
Work through that one.
Yeah, yeah, it's different. And I understand people's concern, but there are ways to coordinate and oversee programs like this so that they become an asset, not a liability.
Almost a police officer.
Well, I wouldn't go that far, but I don't want to work myself out of a job. But, yes, working hand in hand with officers, yes.
How many vehicles do we retire every, in a given year?
About six.
About six per year?
Yes, sir.
And just a ballpark figure, how much each vehicle costs?
The base price of the vehicle. Dan, about? Just the base price of a vehicle without equipment.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So one of my questions was about the Citizen Patrol. And I'm old enough to remember neighborhood watch groups, kind of. And are you thinking that that's sort of how this is, but better trained? I know there are scary things that some people get a little overzealous in their watching and in their patrolling.
So you go through background checks? In two thousand and five, we had two neighborhood watches. We have eighteen now. And we'll certainly involve neighborhood watches in a comprehensive effort to make our city better.
But the Citizen Patrol is in addition to...
It will be in addition to that. It'll be an expansion, yes.
And are they paid?
No.
They're just trained and, okay.
For the love of the job, yeah.
So my other question was, I'd be very curious to even see this mapped, to see even the neighborhood watch. I'm very interested in, in helping neighborhoods.
Good. I will have, I'll get a map produced, and we'll get that to you.
Thanks. I don't want to cause too much trouble.
Might I say Captain Bellinger?
Sorry.
You just nominated yourself to be captain of your neighborhood watch.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
They're the three toddlers on that street who are real troublemakers.
That's what I hear. That's what I hear.
So my other question is, how has crime changed? I was surprised to see that crime still was up during COVID. And I, so how has it fleshed out?
This is when we get into the crime version of Mythbusters. Eighties, extremely violent decade. A lot of drug activity, a lot of drug crime, things like that. Since the nineteen nineties, violent crime has started to come down. And by the year two thousand, when you look at it on a percentage basis, there was about the same violent crime in our society as there was in nineteen sixty. So it came down dramatically and has stayed down for two or three decades now. Now, the news media doesn't want you to believe that, but it is the truth. And we're starting to see a little uptick in violent crime now. And we need to get ahead of that as quickly as we can to try to, try to slow that down or bring us back to some, some pre-two thousand and twenty numbers. But really, the biggest change in crime has been technology. So it's a lot safer to rip somebody off on Facebook than it is to go hold a bank up. And that's really financial crimes and technology crimes as really where we see our biggest increases. The bad part of that is, is they are extremely hard to investigate and extremely hard to make an arrest. The good part is, is there's not that face-to-face confrontation between the criminal and the victim. So the violence aspect of it isn't there. But it's, it has certainly made fraud and financial crimes way easier to perpetrate than they ever have been before, from anywhere in the world. Very frustrating. That's, I think that's the biggest single change that we've seen.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Fisher.
Hey, Chief.
Hey.
You mentioned that you guys are increasing community outreach with new programs. And I'm curious, do you guys have those fleshed out? What are you thinking?
Well, this teen academy is one example of that. The Benchmark Analytics software is not really the soft and fuzzy side, but it is the technical side where we're going to be able to generate numbers to show us where a lot of needs are that are based on fact and not anecdotal. So we'll have some empirical evidence that we can draw on. And we are, we're constantly evaluating the Citizens on Patrol program. That's another outreach. And we are, we are talking about a couple of other programs. One is, I would like to get to the point where we're going to have to pick an age range, but where an on-duty officer can come to your house if your child is having a birthday. We would like for the kids in our community to start seeing police officers as friends and approachable. And so that's, that's something that, that we've been talking about and will probably enact in the very, very near future. And, and we're, we're open, we're open, and we have, I have to say, within reason because this all takes people. It takes money, it takes people, and that's something that we've been in short supply of lately. So the Benchmark Analytics, I think, is probably going to be the biggest actual advance towards that. But, but I'm, I'm, we, every time we have a staff meeting, once a month, we talk about outreach. And even things that are simple that you can't put a name to, like you're driving down... Like you're driving down the street, pull into a church, pull into a business, pull into a school and just get out and start talking to people. And uh, what, I don't know how you put a name to that, there's, there's really not, but it's something, it's something that we're, we are, 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 um, moving forward on. Uh, and just thinking, I hate to say thinking out of the box because I, I just take little catchphrases like that. But it's, let's think about different ways that we can actually get out and become a part of the community and not apart from the community. Just be seen.
Yes, sir. Um, I echo Councilmember Bolden's, um, desire to work with you guys on that. Um, I, I would be happy to, to be involved. Um, I also share the concern on the citizens on patrol program and so I would like to hear, um, updates, more specifics, um, with the overzealousness concern and then, um, also, uh, what, I guess what assignments look like to follow up on Councilmember Bolden's question about, are, are you gonna take somebody from the southwest ward and have them patrol the northwest ward, for example, or vice versa? Patrol, what do those assignments look like?
Oh, well, for instance, um, we do, we do vacation house watches. So, if you go out of town, we can go by your house and check that out. Citizens on patrol can do that citywide. Um, so that's, that's an example of, of a citywide assignment. Um, we can also, um, generate crime maps that are specific to regions of the town, small areas of the town. And uh, um, so, we can ask citizens on patrol to set up and do surveillance. All this is non-intervention stuff. So, um, binoculars and a radio is the extent of that involvement. I promise you one thing, I won't do this until we talk about this with the council.
Great.
At large.
Good.
We, we, we won't do any of that, but I would also like for you to know that I worked for citizens on patrol for years and years and it can be done well.
I'm sure, and I'm sure it can be done very poorly.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely can be done poorly, yeah, yeah. You got it, you've got to avoid the tackle berries out there, if any of you watched the Police Academy movie. And uh, and uh, and we're gonna do that, I, and, and you know, I'm not shy to fire people even if they're not paid. So, um, to get fired from a unpaid job.
This is surprising about you.
Yeah, so uh, um, um, I, I can promise you that, that anything we do in this area, it, it will be done with caution, it'll be done well.
Okay, thank you. Um, the comprehensive management study sounded really interesting to me. Have you guys already picked somebody to do it, a consultant to do it?
Yes.
Um, how did you pick the?
Well, basically, um, Texas Police Chief Association, um, is uh, is who we're, we're going with. And they conduct management studies of law enforcement agencies all the time. That's something that they, they do frequently, um, they do it well, um, and they've been recommended, um, by a number of people. I've been involved in, in a couple of their management studies. I've gone through three of them, um, in my, in my, uh, former life in, in, uh, Midland at the police department there. They, they do a good job, um, and when I say comprehensive, it really and truly is comprehensive from the, the community to the police department, external, internal. And uh, um, and it's, it's a well-thought-out process and they're very, very experienced at it.
I would, you mentioned, um, that a big component of that is community outreach and interviews with citizens and I would love to hear more details about what that actually looks like.
You will.
Thank you.
Cuz they will come here. They don't, they don't do this online.
Okay.
We're over the phone. They, they will come here and you'll have that, you'll have an opportunity
Okay.
to do a face-to-face with them.
Good. Um, a couple more questions. Do you, um, see the use or need for a mental health officer or expert in your department?
Mental health is one of the, the, probably one of the biggest, um, problems that, that we have in police work right now. And I, and I say that because we're police officers, we are not psychologists, psych- psychiatrists, social workers. And uh, but we end up dealing, of course, by, by nature of the event. We end up dealing with these folks all the time, but, but we should be there for the public safety aspect of it. And right now, um, the, the Texas legislature, they, they need to, to take this issue up. They need to act more responsibly and, and help our state out as a whole. And uh, um, there's not enough money, in my opinion, um, being, being, uh, put toward this problem. Um, not enough facilities, uh, and it's a major problem. Uh, we have a lot of people, um, um, street people that, that have a lot of mental problems. And to be honest with you, the police department is not equipped to deal with long-term mental health issues. Um, and, and I would say we need the help and we do, but really our communities need the help. This is a community issue. And uh, and so I agree, yeah, that's a, that's a very, that's a very big problem that is not addressed very well.
And I agree that, that the, the state legislature should do something about it, um, but, you know, up until now, they are not.
Right.
And, um, and so what that means for us locally is that you guys are put in the position of having to, to deal with a lot of these issues, which is unfair to you. And, um, in the, instead of waiting for the state legislature to do something, um, o- on, on, on an important issue like this, is there something that we can do locally to address the issue?
I'm, I'm the chairman of the East Texas Health Network. We meet quarterly with, uh, healthcare providers, mental health care providers, Burke Center, local hospitals, regional hospitals. Um, and we also, not just quarterly, but as, as issues come up, um, we have kind of a free-flowing conversation going on. I think on a local basis, we're, we're doing a lot. Um, primarily, it's communication and relationship building. And if we have a particular problem with someone, we have names and numbers that we can call. But the problem is, is that our, our mental health care system gets overrun easily. And the, the, the capacity just isn't there. So, on a local basis, the, the East Texas Health Network, um, it's, it's, it's been used as a model program in other parts of the state. Cuz it brings all these components together.
Right.
And uh, um, beyond that, I'm open for suggestions. Uh, we spend an awful lot of time with, uh, healthcare providers.
If you had all the money in the world in your budget and you were able to hire somebody, a, a mental health officer who would be able to go on mental health calls, for example, um, would you, would you find use for that?
The money in my budget.
All the money in the world in your budget.
Um, uh, yes, I, I would, I would hire a coordinator and, um, um, a staff of both licensed and non-licensed folks to deal with that. It, it would take a big time burden off our patrol officers and you have to have, it's a calling. Dealing with folks like this, it's a calling and being a police officer is a calling, but being a police officer does not necessarily mix well with, with providing mental health services. Um, it's two different mindsets, to be hon- to be honest with you. And uh, um, I think if, if we were to have a mental health unit staffed and funded, I think I would stop looking for police officers and I would start looking for people who wanted to work with mental health folks. And, and I have some officers that are very, very, very good at this and uh, um, and, and I wish we could do more.
Thank you. Um, last one for you. You mentioned at the very end that during COVID, you guys started instituting a citation-only program or process, I guess, for, for, um, for particular.
Wherever we could, yes.
Right. Um, is that something that you would find use in continuing post?
Yes.
COVID? Are you guys planning on doing that?
Jail overcrowding.
Right.
Uh, is, is really the, the big benefit, um, to us, um, is, is jail overcrowding. Um, but, you know, COVID forced a lot of us to do things in a non-traditional manner that we, we hadn't done anymore. And, and we're trying to learn from those lessons and, and take, take some of those lessons and, and move forward with them. Cuz we don't wanna throw everything out, cuz we, we, we learned some great things.
Right.
And we're gonna keep those. Part of that, part of that is, um, um, misdemeanor citations. And uh, um, uh, and I, it needs to be controlled and we, and we need to be thoughtful about what offenses, um, we, we choose to use with the citation, but yes, we're going to keep components of that.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
My couple of questions were, uh, largely stolen by other council members. You, you've covered everything very thoroughly. Um, I, I do wanna mention that, uh, I'm, I'm really interested in seeing how the benchmark analytics works out. And uh, at least for my part, you know, maybe we can figure out some way to do more than just a, a once annual, um, report on that, once you build up some data and see some patterns and, and.
Yes, I, I agree with you. I think after a year when we get data in the, in the software, um, we're gonna use this to do employee evaluations, um, all kinds of things. And, and it's not gonna be a once-a-year issue, it's, it's, we'll be able to feed it every day. We're also gonna put in our things like uses of force, pursuits, um, officer injuries, um, um, uh, equipment, all kinds of things is gonna go into that. And we're gonna start exploring ways that we can, can present that. And, and my, my goal, um, my near-term goal is to be able to come in here and show you guys live what benchmark looks like and, and what you can get out of it. And we're also working closely with the company because a lot of other agencies use this software already. We wanna look at what they're doing and, and steal as much as we can from them. And uh, and, and that way, why reinvent the wheel? We hear that all the time.
You know, for, you know, being in your position, I can only imagine what a great tool this, uh, this can be to help you.
I'll be honest with you, at first when I brought this up with, with some of my supervisors especially, they were like, oh, you know, why, why? You know, and uh, um, but after we got into it and started to examine it, now people are going, when's it coming? When, when, when are we gonna be able to use? People are starting to, it's like way, way back in the good old days. I was a little baby cop, just about that big. And uh, we started using video cameras and everybody was going, oh, I'm not gonna be on video, I hate video. I don't wanna live my life on camera. And after about six months of that, it was where can I get my camera? So, you know, we, we resist change and, and things that are different are kinda scary sometimes. But th- this benchmark, um, software as.
It's kind of a next level tool from, from just video and audio.
Very much so, and people are starting to, after they previewed it, start to look forward to it. And, and a, a side benefit from that, that, that really, you know, nobody thinks about this, but it's going to free us up from so much paper.
Yeah, well, that's one thing I was gonna mention is the efficiencies.
A lot of paper is gonna go away because this is, this is, um, web-based. So, looking forward to it.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
At, uh, at one of the earlier meetings this year, uh, probably while you were still out, we received, or the council got a profiling study.
Right.
I don't know what the exact term is for it.
Right.
But uh, so does benchmark analytics.
It'll feed that.
Help feed that?
Yep, yep. We're gonna, we're gonna be able to put out a much better quality product, um, with a lot more information.
Great.
So.
And it sounds like, and it sounds like you'd be able to, um, see what kinds of, uh, actions you take and immediately get some, some response to see if this works.
Right now, we work with trends. When, when, when benchmark comes in and, and we're able to feed it, um, we'll be able to work with trends, but we'll also have individual, um, um, we'll be able to look at individual officer actions.
Evaluate your interventions.
Exactly, exactly. We'll see what kinda cause and effect essentially. Um, so, uh, there, right now, the, you, you know, you, you, you just kinda, your mind kinda whirls at, at, um, what all we're gonna be able to, to use this for. And uh, um, so our, our imaginations are kinda running loose and free right now, so, looking forward to it though.
Thank, thank you, Chief, we appreciate the report.
My pleasure, thank you all for your attention. So, if there are no more questions about the police department, um, about five years ago, I was sitting in a meeting and the city manager said, who likes airplanes? And we looked around the room and I raised my hand, so I like airplanes. And he said, okay, you're the new department head over the airport. And that's how I became, um, responsible for the airport. So, um, get, don't get used to this picture because it's gonna change dramatically in the coming years. It's already started and I know some of you were at the airport when we had the, the golden shovel thing for the, the new aviation school out there. So, I'm very excited to talk about the airport, um, accomplishments. Um, uh, we've, we've gone with LED lighting on the runways. Not, not only just better quality lighting, but it's a lot more economical, um, as, as far as energy conservation. Um, installed stormwater testing, um, facilities, um, that make, uh, stormwater testing, which you never knew that was part of the job, did you? Um, uh, it makes it much quicker, more efficient, um, uh, that's been, that's been a nice improvement. Um, we purchased an avgas sump saver. That saves us about seven thousand dollars a year, uh, in wasted fuel because they have to constantly test and evaluate our fuel tanks out there. If you're in a car and you have a fuel problem, you pull over to the curb. If you're in an airplane, well, gravity, um, comes into play there and you've gotta find a place to put that airplane down. So, so we, we're very conscious about fuel quality and fuel testing. Um, Airport Advisory Board, um, uh, instrumental in directing the activities of the airport. Um, we, um, created an airport, um, terminal plan, uh, and that goes through, of course, Tech dot aviation. Um, it was approved, Airport Advisory Board approved it, was approved by Tech dot aviation also. So, that's gonna guide us as we go into the future of the airport cuz the airport is going to become an economic development tool for this community, I promise you that. And uh, um, facilitating, um, the new flight school, HCH Aviation. Um, they, uh, they are, are preparing the, uh, ground out there for building their hangar and classroom facilities as we speak, very, very excited about that. And uh, we're continuing to expand airport, um, and community organizations. Kite Fest is out there, apparently we're gonna have a tractor pull out there in the near future. Um, model aircraft, radio-controlled aircraft still meets out there and have events out there. So, we're gonna continue to expand those events at the airport. We're just gonna be in people's eye, think about the airport kind of a thing. Um, future goals, airport construction and maintenance, um, the new terminal area plan that I talked about, um, we're gonna, we're gonna start moving towards that. That will change the whole look of the airport. It will change how you get into and out of the airport, it will change the, um, um, some of the services out there. Uh, um, we'll incorporate, um, hangar development and, and hopefully make it an environment for aviation-related businesses to wanna locate out there. We have a very attractive airport. We got Houston, um, we've got San Antonio, Dallas-Fort Worth area and we're kinda sorta in that mix. And, but we have, we have very, um, open skies, not a lot of traffic and, and we have a, a, a really good facility to locate things like avionics, power plant, um, things like that, um, businesses or schools or both out there. And we're gonna, we're gonna start moving towards that. Um, resurface the runway within five years. Runways are a maintenance issue, we, we look at them with the help of, of engineering, um, um, annually and so that we can identify problems ahead of time and schedule maintenance ahead of time. Um, in collaboration with the community, uh, continue to pursue projects with the Airport Advisory Board. Um, uh, build rapport with pilots, um, not just local pilots, but as, as air traffic comes and goes from the airport and find out what they need. Um, one of our, um, successes has been in attracting military flights into our airport, a lot of helicopters. They drink a lot of gas and we sell them that gas. So, we're very excited when we see, when you see a bunch of helicopters flying over town, just give them a hand because we really appreciate their business and we do everything we can to make our airport attractive to them. And of course, the aviation flight school is not just about the airport. This is a collaborative effort with SFA, they are creating an academic program that will work hand-in-hand with this. And I, I think it's going to be a really, really, really big deal for our community. Um, impact of COVID-nineteen in general, um, air traffic just almost came to a halt. Um, pleasure trips and, and that, those types of flights really slowed, um, everything down. Uh, of course, the airport did what everybody else did as far as decontamination and, and trying to prevent the spread of COVID-nineteen. Um, um, the impact, of course, uh, uh, we, uh, we became a, a site to take on emergency, um, equipment, um, uh, food, water, things like that. So, we opened up the airport for a lot of those military flights to come in, drop supplies and, uh, and then distribute them from the airport. Here's our, uh, employee, full-time employee summary. We have Joseph Lou as our airport manager, um, doing an exceptional job. Uh, he has one full-time lineman and one, um, part-time lineman, so you have, uh, two and a half. Uh, he has one full-time lineman and one, um, part-time lineman. So you have, uh, two and a half folks out there. Fuel sales, um, when you look at this chart, um, you can see we do a lot of jet fuel, a lot of jet A fuel. And, uh, um, avgas is really, it's a hundred octane gasoline that people love to run their weed eaters on. And, uh, as well as aircraft, piston driven aircraft. Um, uh, FS is full service and, uh, um, is this what that stands for? And then SS is self-service. So you can kind of look at how that's broken down. Um, this is just a historic, um, look at, uh, um, fuel sales for 2020, 2021. Um, we are, we're, we're doing quite well, uh, and I, and I think that this will do nothing to go up as, as, uh, traffic increases. Um, proposed budget. Uh, twenty, um, twenty-one, twenty-two, um, we're looking at a $490,350. Uh, so most of that is taken up in fuel, uh, purchasing fuel, um, hangar leases of around $35,000 a year. Uh, interest income, three hundred and fifty. You know, we have a water well out there that we can pump. Um, to supplement the city's, um, water, uh, that, that well was drilled back during our historic drought. And it's, it's still serviceable and, and can be pumped. Um, proposed budget, $486,525. So, um, fairly flat, uh, on the budget. Uh, and you can see the, the breakdown there, 166 on personnel and then there, there are supplies, maintenance, uh, and contractual services. And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer.
Just have one question and it's in regard to repair of aircraft. Uh, we're going to, uh, have a facility to, for repair and plus parts and warehousing and also training?
Well, right now we have one maintenance facility out there. It's, it's, uh, operated by a, I think it's Kramer, um, is the name of it. Um, he does, uh, aircraft maintenance. Um, we're certainly going to, to try to attract more of that, but he's our only provider out there right now. Um, the, uh, HCH Aviation is going to provide commercial aircraft training. Um, they already have their, their first class will begin later this year. So that's, and that's a reality. Uh, but as, as, as we move along, um, through HCH and other companies, we're going to start, um, identifying other opportunities and showcase our airport. Uh, and part of that terminal area plan is a big part of that because it identifies building sites. Um, that fit in with the overall plan of the airport. And, uh, so if somebody comes in and says, can I do this? Can I do that? We can actually give them a map now and say, these areas have already been, um, marked out for future growth. So I, we're, we are ready.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. We sure do appreciate you. Thank you for the report.
Thank you very much.
And we've had a request for a break. Yes, yes ma'am. Gavel it and say granted or something.
Just, just go ahead and deny it.
Okay. I say we're, we're ready to get started.
Mayor Council Steve Bartlett, Director of Public Works. You are going to be so glad you had a break. So I have eight departments to go through with you. So with your permission, I am going to talk fast and move quickly through some of this information. You will have all this. If you don't have it in front of you, you'll have copies and we can dive, we can dive deep in anything you want. But with your permission, I'm going to move quickly through some of the more easier parts. So engineering, the most interesting one first. There we go. So in general, we accomplished, uh, what we tried to accomplish every year, which is to do a bunch of water and sewer projects. And so we did several miles of new water and sewer lines, five major drainage improvements, spent several million dollars of city's money trying to improve our infrastructure as well as new paving systems for the year. Uh, our future goals include, uh, using our new drone and beginning a landfill expansion program, uh, which we'll dive into a little bit in sanitation. Also to start some preliminary design on some major, major sewer trunk issues that we have with Glanana and Benita Creeks. So what are our, uh, service level issues? Well, like you've heard all night from many people, lack of staff, uh, always affects our ability to do what we do. And so we have been fortunate to program a position for a new engineer that we're currently seeking now. And that's going to help. And as you'll see in a moment, uh, we also are proposing a position for a new, uh, administrative person that we'll share with, with, uh, planning department. Uh, increased workload demands come from all the program managers. So the more projects we do, the more things, uh, that we need to manage. And so also regulatory changes, just keeping up with regulatory changes, much less helping our departments implement those regulatory changes are a challenge to our staff load. So, uh, our innovations, again, uh, we've implemented this new drone technology. So we're taking high resolution photos. We're now using it to survey, do topographic, and we're planning on in the future implementing it to inspect elevated storage tanks and do off-road water and sewer lines where right now it's difficult to access and inspect them. So, uh, during COVID, uh, I won't detail because you're going to have the same kind of story of everything. But we were able to implement technology changes that allowed us to meet virtually and do things. Uh, we did, uh, hold, uh, bid openings outside, which may have been the first ever. Uh, but we held a bunch of them out in the Plaza Principale. So that was kind of fun. Case enjoyed that. So. Full-time employee summary, uh, we are, uh, not huge, but as you can see, uh, we're showing to, uh, add a half a person, which is tough, but that is a person we want to share, an administrative assistant we want to share with planning. Right now, neither planning nor engineering has an admin. So this will help us let engineers do what engineers need to do and, and get some more assistance from that. So, uh, real quickly on a organizational chart, you can see that office assistant is shared between the two. There we go. So our proposed expenses, uh, we're effectively flat. Uh, the one change you see is primarily because in this year we have already gotten approval and we're adding a new engineering position. So those are monies for that primarily. Uh, other than that, it's just some general up and down, uh, normal expenses that we anticipate for everything from, uh, drone maintenance to some software dollars. So. Are currently, again, this is our office assistant. This is half an office assistant funded at $23,000. So that is our ask for you for engineering. Be happy to answer any questions. Pretty exciting, I know. Anybody?
You said that engineer has already been budgeted?
We currently have an engineer and budget pan. Is that correct?
The engineer and training.
Yes.
Okay.
So we're currently seek, actually seeking to fill that position now. Yes, sir. Yeah. This is a young engineer right out of school kind of position. So, um, and I won't promise you I'd go fast, but it's important to try to bring these folks up as we add all these projects. I think we're going to be administering in the near future and kind of help train. So, uh, I've got just a little bit of time left with the city. And so this is, I think, important to try to bring some structure and understanding. So it's not just the engineering that you need to know to do our job. It's how we do, what we do here. And I think it's important. So we're some boots on the ground. So I think this is a real good investment to grow our own, quite honestly. Sorry.
I have a real quick question.
Sure.
That half a position, that's a full-time position and you're just sharing it.
That's correct.
So I'll see it later on.
That's correct. That's correct. Um, so planning and engineering sit in the same.
Right.
Place. And we share the same front desk. And so it just made sense that we could share the same admin, uh, person. So. Okay. I'll move on. Uh, planning and zoning. Okay. Very similar, uh, in COVID driven, of course, um, they were able to come up with hybrid staff meetings and following state and federal guidelines as well. But for PNZ and ZBA, so that was a, a kind of a big leap, bigger than just meeting on Zoom, uh, to get through that. So they also developed, and this was in response, I think, to council and the public, new outreach strategies and new ways to communicate with the public and new ways to, to give public notice for things. So, uh, I think they made some great accomplishments there. And also the big thing that's currently ongoing, as you guys know, we've been working on a comprehensive master plan and downtown plan. And so Elena has had the lead in that and those have been a huge step. This is probably once a career thing, uh, for planners and a big thing for the city. So that's been a big accomplishment that we'll continue to talk about in the coming budget year. Future goals, uh, of course, we'd like to complete a development review process, back to earlier discussions, Ms. Fisher, that you had about permitting and the ease of permitting. We'd like to do a whole development review process and try to have an outside, um, company. So we programmed a little bit of money, uh, I think like $15,000 to get a consultant to help evaluate our whole process. And that's built into that budget, but we think that's an important thing. Um, Elena would also like to do some more PNZ commission training. So we'd like to often, we've got some new folks y'all just put on. We'd like to give them trainings and have a little budget to maybe send them to some schools. Of course, we couldn't do that for the last year. And so, uh, we'd like to begin that process as well. And again, finishing the comp plan, downtown plan are primary goals. So, um, some of the challenges again were, um, we've had an increase in zoning and permits. I'll show you in just a second. And that challenges staff. So, uh, this is such a huge department of two, that as you get an increase in zoning cases, it just becomes more workload. Also, and certainly not a complaint, but the further outreach that we're doing now and the more notices and the more things is just more man hours in time. So this is the reason again for the half of an admin for planning is to help them with some of those more administrative tasks. Uh, and then Juan, uh, who's a permit technician will be able to help Elena more directly as kind of an assistant planner. I think that will work well. So again, same story with COVID and post-COVID technology and meetings, uh, really changed the way we do. I will tell you, and this theme will come up again, uh, later, even though we've learned to do things in a hybrid fashion. It's kind of funny when you're challenged, whether it's Snomageddon or whether it's this, you learn new techniques that really polish what you do forever. And so we are still using all those technologies today, even though we don't necessarily need to. Uh, we've had probably one or two meetings a week now that we just do in a virtual world and it's been a really big benefit. Just interestingly, um, this is building permits on the top and PNZ applications on the bottom, split up by type. Realized 2021 is not done yet. So what you see there is not a full year's worth of data. So you can see our applications have grown and therefore the workload that corresponds with them have grown. So there are two, currently two folks in planning, uh, proposing to add the other half. So we'll have a two and a half person staff. There is the exciting org chart. Please. And so they made the boxes really big so that it looked good. And here's the, here's the org chart with the office assistant. So it worked directly. Uh, we, we will put that office assistant under, uh, directly under the planner.
Tough edit.
Pardon?
Tough edit.
It was, wasn't it? Thank you. Yeah. Some time involved in this. But, uh, so they weren't, won't actually report, you know, to me or case. They'll report to the planner and then we'll just be able to utilize them just for, for management purposes. That made the most sense. So as far as, uh, budget is concerned, and I'm turning pages trying to parallel this, but I printed them double. So excuse me. There we go. Um, so as far as budget is concerned, relatively flat budget, there's additional cost in there for their half a person. Uh, but as you can see, a little bit additional cost in mailouts and supplies, but, uh, basically effectively a, a flat budget for planning. So. And again, there is the supplemental request is the $23,000. Happy to answer any questions on that one. Anybody? Okay. Proceed. You guys are letting me fly. Public Works. So this will be, uh, basically our street and drainage stuff, um, directly Public Works. So Public Works completes a lot of stuff each year, y'all, but they have done seven internal projects and realized we can't pay full-time by any means. So. But they were able to get several, excuse me, seven different paving projects done when they could aggregate enough folks, uh, to do it. They cleared over 10 miles of right away, restripped a number of streets. Uh, our street sweeper, which is one of our programs, I want to talk to you about in a minute, uh, did over 350 miles of streets. Realized they circuit around town and make it three or four times a year to your street to sweep. So, uh, we, we hit lots of miles of streets, even though we still get calls come sweep my street a lot. Uh, so they work real hard. For, for the future, uh, we would like to, uh, focus on paving city facilities. So right now we're looking at refocusing Public Works Street Department to do city facilities, like city parking lots and park parking lots. Things that we can come and go a little bit more on and not have a street shut down and where we get called off for an emergency. So that, and to do what I'm going to call just intersections. Intersections wear out far quicker than what's in front of your house. And we need to just cut out and replace intersections. That's kind of low hanging fruit project we can do in a day. So we're going to refocus Public Works Street guys to having that as their paving, uh, at least for the, for the near future. That's kind of our goal. Uh, also Kerry has been very big on safety. And so, uh, Kerry wants to implement some pedestrian safety, uh, things, some additional bollards, as well as some safety training, as you'll see, for some of our employees. So we can finally get back into trainings and have trainers come in or go to trainings. And so, uh, training, safety training for us is going to be a big, big priority and it has been. So tell me about the, what's the bollards? What, how, what does that look like? So, you know, right now where we have the gates, uh, for example, for festival park. So those gates are difficult at best. They don't support, um, uh, accessible route, handicap accessibility very well. They're not built for that. And so the idea that Kerry has is to install some removable bollards that would go in the street. That would allow maybe the golf carts to get through or cert or emergency stuff. But if we needed to get a fire truck or an ambulance in, they just come out. And so we can put them up for two things, for festivals. We can also put it up when we have the floods and we need to stop those areas with those are typical flood areas. So. Uh, but this would be us installing it in the street, buying these pre-made bollards that go in them and then they kind of lock in place. So we feel it's a much safer and a better route. And like I say, quite honestly, it doesn't facilitate accessibility either, uh, our current system doesn't. Okay. So what challenges, uh, are they having? Again, uh, inadequate staffing has been probably one of their largest challenges. Uh, they fight aging equipment like all my departments that use big equipment do. And so they try to stretch it and stretch it and, or the budget won't allow it this year and we stretch it another year and they're repairing things. So it's not the repair dollars necessarily that we complain about. It's the downtime. So the public has the expectation that we're there today and tomorrow and the day after that. So I always use the example, when the garbage truck breaks down, they still expect the garbage to be picked up and we have to be able to facilitate that. So our equipment rotations, you'll see in general in Public Works and Water Utilities altogether, are really focused on having near constant service. Or having some duplicity so we can go out and, and do it. And it's a different, um, police chief has the same thing. He's got to keep people in patrol cars and we've got to keep people in garbage trucks. So. Um, sorry, looking here, a thing for COVID, um, again, they had, uh, interestingly, they learned to do more with less, I think was, uh, Kerry's comment to me. So they were able to work with reduced personnel levels. We started cross-training folks. So again, you'll see me talking in a minute in sanitation about how street department ended up going to landfill to operate. We lost all three operators at the landfill. And guess what? The law requires us to cover garbage every day. So we had to get street operator, street folks in, to work into the landfill. And even today, we still are using street folks because we've had some staffing issues. So. Uh, but learning and cross-training and doing this is really what we learned from COVID. And I'll say that it was the benefit of that. All right. And I think I got, sorry, one slide behind, didn't I? So the street department, uh, was really reduced from 15 to 11 employees and that was kind of a technical maneuver. Um, we got so many calls about brush pickup, um, starting a couple of years ago, that we, uh, bought a new brush truck. The council approved a new brush truck, which was on a rotation schedule. And we did not get rid of the old brush trucks. We put Band-Aids on it. Kerry has kept it running. And we ended up moving two folks and made two brush truck crews. So we've lost street guys to just become brush truck because there, our brush volume keeps increasing. I don't know if we just have more storms or just lots of bad limbs, but it has been insatiable. And even with two brush trucks, which do half the city and half the city at a time, people still call every day. There's not a day that we don't have work orders for brush pickup. Or I put it out on Thursday and it's Friday morning. Where are you? And so the expectation levels are high. So we run two crews full-time right now. So we removed those folks from streets. They're in a sanitation role because of that. Um, and that depleted folks that streets could use to pave and unplug culverts. And so when we say we lost people, we lost them because we moved them to these alternate functions. And so it's one reason you'll see, street department is asking for some additional staffing. So that looks like this. So currently, um, we have three in Public Works Administration. We split this up and this is, uh, Kerry and Kim and was Ellen. She just retired. So we have an administrative person. This, that's three is Public Works Administration. And then, uh, did I say that right? I did. Okay. Thank you. And so, uh, then street department proper is now just 11 folks. Well, it takes 10 people minimum to pave a street. So keep that in mind. We shut down everything else that we do to go pave a street. So that's why. So then our fleet maintenance group, uh, which is our automotive repair group, uh, has four folks currently there. So our proposed staffing again, um, well, we'll see that in a moment. So that's for, for, yeah, for 2021, 22, we'll have that staffing and then some requests that we're going to have for you on top of that here in just a second. Just to give you an idea how. Just to give you an idea how they're organized in Public Works is four main areas. We have sanitation collection, it's a garbage truck group collecting. We have sanitation disposal, which is landfill area. And then we have our Street Department and our Fleet Maintenance Department. And Mr. Walker oversees all that crew, along with the help of our Sanitation Services Coordinator, Kim. So here's vehicle maintenance, uh, proposed budget. Uh, again, it's a flat budget, as you can see, so they've requested a few new capital items to help replace air conditioner free on and do some new computers so they can work on these vehicles. But in general, they don't have any huge ask, and they've been able to keep their budget relatively levelled, except for a couple of small asks. Public Works Administration. We'll go through that, is it 273, 273,000? And the personnel differences are because we did a reclassification for one employee this year, so there was some additional dollars in there next year in the payroll category because of that. Uh, we have some increases in supplies that are mostly due to, um, some periodic licenses and trainings that come up. So these guys all have licenses for landfills, Kerry has multiple license, and every so many years they have to go out for trainings and pay to renew those licenses, and you're seeing the cost for that training and license renewals for that slight increase. So we have some increases in maintenance, which I believe was for security items, some additional security items. And interestingly, the one I want to call your attention to is under contractual services went from $18,000 up to 35, and you may ask, what are you doing? That is $24,000 that we'd like to spend for a litter abatement. So right now we get a lot of calls, there's trash all along the loop, there's trash all along Martinsville, there's trash somewhere to pick up. And these 11 guys that we showed you are out unplugging culverts, are patching streets, are doing things, and to go out and individually pick up litter is difficult for us for a mile. And so what we'd like to do is contract, have a company we can contract on call, and there are several of these, some of them are providers of, of people that, um, work with special, special needs folks that help do this in some cases, but we'd like to get a provider that we can use to call for trash pickup when we have these events, so. Because right now we struggle with trying to get it done, and that's the truth. So there's $24,000, we kind of made that number up to give us a target budget. We're not sure what we'll spend, but we think that's a reasonable budget if we had to do multiple calls a month for trash pickup. We'd like to up our game anyway, not just from those calls, we've got some streets that quite honestly always have trash, so we'd like to do that. So we have basically a small increase in total budget for Public Works Administration. Here's the Streets' proposed budget. Just call your attention to, I guess, the 2021 budget for personnel. Uh, that higher number, uh, or excuse me, dropped, included overtime for the winter storm, and you see it's back down in the 21, 22. Again, this isn't including the ask, I'm fixing to show you, but that's the reason it was higher last year is we had overtime from a storm. So again, a down to our, almost a flat budget considering the overtime. So here's the proposed personnel asks and changes. So in the Street Division, um, this is a second street sweeper. So the second most phone call we get is for street sweeping. So again, we have one street sweeper, we hope the street sweeper runs most of the time and that he isn't sick, but the street sweeper is going on around, so we get a lot of calls. And one of the things we've proposed for you to consider is to hire another person to run a street sweeper. And if you'll see in capital equipment in a minute is another street sweeper, and so they go together. If we don't buy the street sweeper, we don't need the street sweeper person, so they go together. But the cost for that person's a little over $38,000. Street Division would then like to have two laborers to help them with cleanup and fix up and just labor-related activities on street paving crews, uh, and that's a cost, total cost of over seven, a little over 70,000. We'd like to get an operator one, and our operators all have, for example, CDLs and can drive vehicles. Operator one is our entry-level operator, so that's somebody we would grow hopefully to an operator two someday at that, and then an operator two as well to bring a more experienced equipment operator in as well. So that's, that's kind of their ask is to up with a couple of labor people and a couple of operators. Capital expense-wise, um, Public Works is looking, or Street Department's looking at two things, and one is a forklift, and, which may sound strange for the Street Department, but we found out especially during the ice storm, where we were called to constantly unload pallets of water and equipment and supplies, we don't have a forklift to do it. And so we would try to put some forks on the bucket of a tractor, you know, that we probably all have, uh, and try to do it. And what we were looking at is possibly keeping a forklift at Public Works to be able to unload and load supplies that require pallets. And so, uh, just a piece of something that we've been missing, so, uh, it's simply an ask. And then a wash bay, we have, we don't have a wash bay at Public Works, so all of our equipment gets washed all the time, but we have to take it over to the mechanic shop, there's only one place to wash, even though there's a couple of really good car washes on University. Sorry. No, I don't want dump trucks in there, nevermind. So we have to, so one of their thoughts is we'd like to have a wash bay there. Well, that sounds simple, why don't you just wash them? Well, the water has to be captured, it has to go in oil water separators, grit chambers, has to be permitted, those have to be emptied every 60 days, so that just the construction of the wash bay and a little high-pressure hose and a cover is, is, is a 40,000-ish dollar thing, and that's where that comes from. Capital expense budget, so everything you see is replacement here, like the sign shop truck and the crew truck. These are replacement trucks that have been on schedules. So, uh, we keep, um, I call it a depreciation account, maybe a sinking fund type approach, but basically, um, these are set up for replacement or coming up for replacement. So we, um, are just proposing to do what would be normal budget replacements with those first two. The third item is a bucket truck, and, and we laugh because this has been an ask for, for a while. Uh, it's a tough ask, uh, this is a bucket truck, we have no bucket. We have no way to lift and get up and do things elevated, whether it's trimming trees around a streetlight or whether it's putting up a banner downtown. And so at one point in time, at one point in time, people were in the buckets of front end loaders doing this, and that's probably not an OSHA acceptable thing. So that practice has long since been stopped, and we've now struggled with doing things elevated. So, uh, we will either try to hire an electrician, because they all have bucket trucks, or try to rent one or do something, and we just have struggled every time we've had one of these needs. Parks can use this, Police Department who sets their, um, camera systems, you know, their surveillance camera systems, so camera systems that we set for illegal dumping, all, all these things. So we think Parks, PD, Public Works would all share this truck in some form or fashion. But it's a $150,000 truck, and that's why it's a tough ask, so we, we, we know that. But we think it's something that we have just struggled with, how to do these things with, without it, and we want to bring it to you for consideration. Additional thing is a trailer-mounted attenuator, this is a crash barricade, you've seen these on the highway, when, when high, people work on the highways. So, uh, when we work on a busy street, we did waterline repairs on Main Street here a while back, and the way we do crash barricades now is we bring another backhoe in, drop it off, and park it behind the guy. So we, we kill a piece of equipment's functionality to use it as a crash barricade for the guys who are literally working in the street. So it would make a lot more sense for under $30,000 or under $25,000 to have a true trash, trash, crash attenuator that we can put out, use the equipment where the equipment needs to be used. I think it's a real valid safety concern, and I think it makes a lot more sense than putting a second piece of equipment, uh, out there in the street, so. And then again, the street sweeper that we spoke of a while ago, uh, is, is a, they are expensive, $275,000. So if you wanted to up your game on street sweeping, you know, you're looking at a 30 some odd thousand dollar your employee in this initial capital cost. Okay, lot, lot, I went through a lot, so be happy to answer questions.
I'm just going to make a comment on one thing. In, in general, um, had been a low request for street maintenance in my right, and I don't know if it's because less travel during the pandemic, et cetera, but there's been an uptick in the right-of-way, maintaining the right-of-ways, the mowing and et cetera, trash and, is that something that can be looked into? Because it's a constant call for that type issue.
Sure.
I don't want to mention railroad street.
You and I have never talked about railroad street.
Okay.
So, no, and, and you're absolutely right, and, and it's the story we, we always discuss, we've got more needs than we have folks, and so we just kind of react, unfortunately, we're reactive, not proactive. And that's not anything against our guys, we just haven't had a lot of guys or gals to do it. So, uh, I, I agree with you, I think that the trash pickup, the mowing, and by the way, sometimes we get a lot of trash when we mow, because we hit it.
Yeah.
So I, I think that's something, if we could better staff, some more labor staff and a little bit of operator staff to run those mowers, then I think our right-of-way mowing and all that, we could, we could kick it up. So how do we prioritize things? I don't remember, Kerry, what was the total number of work orders? Do you remember your number? You were working from Mac 311? Just since we've implemented the work order system, so as we speak, there's work orders coming in from the public, and so.
Are, are those cleared yet?
Kerry would say almost. So, um, so I, no, you're right, and we, and we get those requests and those calls. So, um, Street Department's going to go out and take care of a tree across the road or a pothole this big or a plugged culvert first, and we're going to work on, you know, trying to do the mowing and the right-of-way cleanup second, and those are just the way we prioritize by safety concerns. So, yeah, the answer is yes, we'd love to up our game, and part of my ask is, is for staffing to do that.
Do the state take care of their own right-of-way maintenance?
So the answer is yes and no. So we have a, um, a memorandum of understanding with the state, and we do some mowing and operations within the city limit. For example, uh, Street Department just mowed, uh, Old Tyler Rutt, 1638. And that was us doing that because it's part of our MOU, and we, we do some of those areas. So it's kind of defined what we do and don't do, uh, but, but areas like that, and, and you guys have seen our maps before, but the public doesn't realize how many of our roads are state-maintained roads, but roads like, you know, Woden and Choney, and, and those are all state. And so we mow some of those roads according to this agreement, yes, so it's, it's a, it's, it's a yes and no answer, but.
And this is just observation, and the budget for supplies. And you mentioned that, uh, training was instilled into that amount?
Okay, in the Supplies Budget for Public Works Administration is got, I believe, Pam, you correct me, I think that went up because, um, Kerry has got some training and license renewals, is that right? Public Works Admin Supplies. Is that where his training, and I'm sorry, guys. Okay, I'm sorry.
Y'all can go on and I can.
And, and, and that's why I was asking that question. I mean, if there's audits and et cetera done, embedding that training in supplies wouldn't be the right spot in my.
So the real budget, the real budget has a training category in it that's very visible. This summary that you've seen tonight, guys, is everything aggregated, you know, rolled, rolled up into three or four categories that are more just friendly for discussion purposes. So, yeah, none, none of it's being hidden, shh, we tried, she doesn't let us hide. I've tried to buy all kinds of things under training.
That answers my question.
No, you're absolutely right, and, and it is there, and I apologize, with eight budgets in front of me, sometimes I can't remember where everything's stuck, but we can get you that answer.
No, you're, I'm okay, as, we only have one street sweeper personnel.
Correct.
Thank you.
And they work early in the morning, I hear them.
I don't hear them, they don't come out in the neighborhood.
Oh, they don't? They, they, they come a lot downtown.
Okay.
I just have, um, one question, and it's kind of, um, a question that covers, you know, a lot of different departments. Um, I know we, you mentioned contracts, um, and, and of course you contract throughout everything you do. I, I am going to be looking in the future to see what we contract outside of town and what we contract with people here.
Sure.
And I think sometime I'd like to have a discussion about how we could do more contracting with people who are living here, spending their money here, and then also possibly do some economic development if there's some positions or some kind of work that we're always contracting outside. I would really like us to see building that, um, that capacity within our city. So we're hiring people here, we're paying people here.
And we, and we'd love that, we'd love that discussion, I will tell you, I think we have a common thread with you on that. So it is a priority to us, uh, the law allows us in the bidding world to, uh, award contracts locally, even if they're 5%, if the second-low bidder is within 5%. So there's some rules like that we can deploy, and we have.
Right, I'm, I'm sure you have, I'd like to figure.
Yeah, but I, but we'd love to have that discussion, but I do want you to know it, it's a common vision for us as well, because we, we believe that.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to know if, uh, you and Chief Kipling are going to arm wrestle for the money on this, uh, budget? Because, uh, both have some painful ass, and, uh, you know, unfortunately, they're, they're all necessary things, I think, but, uh.
Yeah, it's hard to argue with putting out a fire versus, you know, mowing, isn't it?
Blessing.
Well, speaking.
Yeah, yeah, flushing, yeah.
Yeah, I, I find things like, uh, water and sewer and, uh, garbage, uh, pickup and that sort of thing to be.
Relatively important.
Pretty important, yeah, so. I, I appreciate you're distilling that as much as possible, I know it's a lot to go through, but.
No, and I appreciate it's a tough ask, and, and things like ladder trucks are just a single big, huge thing, you know? We talked about $150,000 bucket truck, which makes us swallow twice, but things like the Chiefs. And we understand too that sometimes some of our needs need to push out of the way for things like a ladder truck. So, I mean, we, we realize that, but at this point, we want to show you what our needs are to do what we think is, is the best and quite honestly, minimum customer service, and that's what we're showing you, so. So a couple of years ago, somebody put up some really nice crosswalk things in Main Street, and it caused traffic to slow down and allow you to cross the street. How, how do we fix that? It's, it's not like that today, today you run across in fear for your life. I, I don't know anybody that lives down here that would do that. What's the answer? Jerry's shaking her head. Oh, Jerry's shaking her, okay. So we have included, and Kerry, you correct me, um, if you don't mind me turning around, but Kerry, uh, we've got, you put in the budget for some downtown pedestrian crossing.
We put in for two intersections downtown for some electronic crosswalks, for the two major sections of downtown.
And, and these are not the, the hit-me-please bollards in the middle of the road, these are flashing, um, signs, if I remember right, is that correct?
Yes, there are digital signs that you push, push a button and you cross.
And they've been put in the regular streets budget already. Good, good, thank you. We heard you. Any other questions on that? So, all right, I will move into sanitation. Oh, I thought you were finished. We are not quite halfway. I know you love me. All right, sanitation, so very quickly, um, they serve 9,400 accounts, y'all, so they, they have a busy, a busy week or a busy day. But we still maintain curbside grass and leaf pickup, we still maintain, of course, curbside brushes, we talked about, uh, pickup. We removed over 100,000 yards of storm debris, so, um, these guys accomplished a lot, um, in, in the last year. We still are maintaining our cardboard recycling, uh, program as well. So the rest of our recycling's not active at this time, we do, is one economically feasible, but the cardboard has continued, so. And did I hit a, I think I hit a... There we go, okay, sorry. Okay, so what challenges, uh, face sanitation? Again, they've struggled with staffing, as everybody has, this is at the landfill particularly. So we have three operators, these are the guys that are out there when you go that are pushing trash and covering and taking care of getting it all in the right place all day long. And so, interestingly, when COVID hit, we had, we lost all three of them, I think, at one point. And so, uh, we had guys pushing trash that don't push trash for a living and ruin equipment. But what we realized, you know, a number of years ago, we visited, or, or dated a company who wanted to talk to us about contracting the landfill and, and doing our trash pickup. And so we visited about that proposal. One of the comments they made to Kerry and I when they came out to look was, how do you operate a landfill with three operators? We would have six here if we took your landfill over. Well, we're not coming to you to ask for all six operators, but the point is, they identified that we were understaffed for this, for the yardage that we're trying to cover. So, uh, one of the innovations that I think has really helped and come up with is, um, with the help of some of, um, our department guys in engineering and GIS, working with Public Works very closely, is we've got a great work order system in place now, and, um, our guys shake their heads sometimes because all day long now their phone dings with a new work order. And so, um, they have, literally are processing these thousands of requests. But what it's allowed us to do is not operate off sticky notes or forget that Steve called about the bump over here because one of you told me about it, and it gets lost in a crack. And so I'm real proud to tell you that I, literally in the Kroger parking lot the other day, somebody's telling me something, and before I got in my car, there was a work order sent, and like I say, it, it's a good thing. So it has really upped our game in Public Works and in. in Public Works and in streets and sanitation in general. So those are some great accomplishments for us. Um, their COVID reactions, you know, they didn't need to do virtual meetings at the landfill. So there's not much virtual trash. So. But what they, what they did learn about is about operating the gatehouse differently. They learned about keeping their folks separated and how to operate when all three are down. What do we do as a backup? And so we developed some really good skills for backing up in conditions like that. Sorry, get through here. So currently sanitation disposal is also a little understaffed. And we have been diverting street crews, uh, frequently, very frequently over to the landfill to help. Uh, when we get inspected, they, of course, they notify us a couple of weeks they're coming to do a landfill inspection. We are out with all the street department at the landfill picking up trash, helping move things. Not that we operate badly, they don't. But for inspection time, you polish and that's, they're out. But we're doing that because we don't have enough staff to polish. Uh, every day we get wind blown trash. If you've ever gone out there, it's a fun place. If you ever go out there, trash is gonna blow. It's just a hard thing to manage, even though we cover trash every day. What we need, part of our request is gonna be for some labor staff to do nothing but help manage wind blown trash. Keep it off our neighbors, keep it off our fences. So let me show you what that looks like. So, um, right now we have in sanitation administration, two people. Sanitation collection seventeen and sanitation disposal six. And you can see for the full-time employees, we're asking for twenty one, twenty two will be three in administration. Half, seventeen and a half, which is a part-time laborer. And then go from six to eight and a half, which is one full-time, uh, excuse me, two full-time labors and one part-time laborer. So that's the ask. Again, I think I showed you this earlier, just to remind you, this is one of the whole layer of four department groups that Public Works runs. So their budget for, this is the regular budget for the year, uh, is one point four million. And we had one point six last year, but that did include again overtime for debris collection. So we're doing the best we can to kind of mimic our past budget with whatever minimal increases were necessary just for parts and equipment and estimated increases with the exception again of our, uh, ask for staff. So jump over, here's the landfill budget, nine hundred and three thousand. And again, you can see it's, um, uh, almost a level, almost a level ask. So again, here's the staff changes for the landfill. An operator two, a class, second class operator, um, a, uh, laborer, a, uh, part-time laborer, and then a code enforcement operator. So Chief Kiplinger talked to you about code enforcement operators. Well, this is where the full-time person is. So what we'd like to do is add this code enforcement operator. And this was an idea that Carrie and, and the chief, I think, kind of worked together on. And, uh, they'll be kind of a sanitation related employee, so they'll, they will focus on illegal dumping. So it's a way for us to, to fund them under this department. They will be managed under one group though. They will still be managed under code enforcement, uh, but we're proposing that they come more out of this budget and that you allow them or allow us to allow them to have a lot of their focus on illegal dumping, which helps justify the position we're taking them, that we're paying for here at sanitation, cause that, that makes sense. They can still do other code enforcement assistant things, don't get me wrong, but this, this will be your full-time person. So, did I say that right Pam?
Yes, you did.
Thank you. Sanitation's capital expense budget. So everything that's shown as replacement for our trucks and loaders are things we would normally have for replacement depreciation account. Uh, and obviously before any of these are purchased and we get final quotes, Pam verifies that we're not depleting the fund too much and there's enough depreciation funds there, but these are up for the schedule. So they would be what I would tell you would normally be on there, not a special ask. Um, we run these things as long as far as we can. We do at least two garbage trucks a year. That sounds crazy, doesn't it? But when, with the number we, we run, the chassis wears out in just a few years. I mean, they get. So they're big old diesel engines that don't drive any faster than twenty five miles an hour all over town. Kind of the discussion we had about fire trucks a while ago. Uh, so it really is abusive on, on the diesel and the chassis. And then those things take a lot, just take a lot of abuse. So every year we buy two garbage trucks. This particular year, we're actually asking for another rear load, which is what we use for the leaf disposal. So every now and then we'll have a third one in there. So, uh, these are all normal. Uh, then again, um, the item that's new and unusual is our route optimization software. It's an option. Uh, we think we can optimize our pickup routes for brush and, and even for our normal sanitation collection in better ways. But this is a lot of artificial intelligence help to come up with route optimizations. So this is something that's constantly changing. And if we get calls in a different area or we add new restaurants here, we, the, the program helps us optimize our routes so that they're balanced. What we don't want is one driver that has to work three hours overtime on this route and another driver that gets back two hours early. And we gotta start manipulating those boundaries. And they, they're doing that by hand, quite honestly, and doing a good job of it. So, um, the software is not the cheapest software in the world, but this is what a lot of the larger communities use to route their folks for all of their type of collections that they're using. So. And then the last thing, uh, is a really important ask, uh, is backup sensors. So we, uh, our new trucks that we're buying all have backup sensors on them. So these will be to retrofit the trucks that don't. And, um, they're more expensive than you think to get them, not just purchase them, but to have them installed and retrofitted into the system. But we think that's a big safety component. One backup accident costs more than this. And so we think it's a good buy. For the landfill, uh, again, these are just normal replacements. We wear out dozers. And it's time, we can get you the specifics on, on any of these as you wish, but I think they're twenty thirteen-ish models, I think, something, yeah. Twenty thirteen models, uh, they've had lots of, lots of trash. So, um, it's time to start getting, we're starting to have a lot of failures and it's time to start looking. And then one crew truck replacement. And we'll tell you several, if you go back and look later, several of the truck replacements we've proposed to you compared to what you'll see in a minute in Water Utilities are a little bit more expensive. These are typically three quarter ton trucks, so they can haul trailers of stuff. And, and we've also are proposing to get a few more four-wheel drives. Guess what we learned during the ice storm? We had only a couple of four-wheel drives available and it really crippled our ability to get out or move and do things. So we don't want an entire fleet of four-wheel drives, but we wanted to get a few more in some of our departments to facilitate. There's the guys. So happy to answer any questions that you have.
I just had one quick question about the route optim- optimization software. Is that a one-time cost? We, we buy it and it's ours, or is it, uh?
Yes, it's a one-time cost or then a lot smaller maintenance fee every year. It's kind of, kind of obscene.
Like what, a fifty hundred or something a year, wasn't it like that?
It's two thousand.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah, it's a big cap. Yes, that's correct. It's a great question. I should have, I should have said that. Okay, we'll move forward. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Only backup sensors. Is that thirty thousand per, uh, that so many trucks?
How many trucks, Carrie?
Out there about eight trucks.
Okay, and, and.
Eighteen.
I would like to think that if we are looking to put those on trucks that we have now, they are old trucks, right?
Yes.
So, okay.
Well, yes, we're trying to retrofit trucks that don't have them. So some of them may be within years of replacement. Is that your comment?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I think that's a true statement. Um, that is, that is the proposal, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, utility construction. In the years past, we called it distribution and collection, which didn't mean anything to anybody. So this, um, department's been morphed and changed. Uh, as you'll see the org chart in a minute, it's now run by Jason Smith, who was previously an engineering, um, assistant and was great, and he's doing a fabulous job. But they basically are the guys who fix the water and sewer lines. So that's the crew that does that. Uh, what they accomplished, they repaired a hundred and twelve, uh, water line breaks and sixty sewer line breaks, um, in over two hundred and ninety-three miles of lines. They did forty-one breaks alone to, just during the ice storm or post ice storm. So they were very busy. Um, they also, uh, have a grade, as you'll see, a crew that we have, that's a camera inspection crew. So we have a crew that almost full-time does nothing but run cameras down your sewer line. So if you hear noises, that's probably them looking in your sewer line. So that's how we identify lines that need to be replaced, lines that are broken. It's the best way we know. And we've literally gone to almost full-time camera video. So unfortunately I don't get good phone calls when they do it. So you gotta see this line that's not there anymore, you know? And so it prompts a lot of projects, a lot of what you see us doing for water and, for sewer repairs because of that. We also have a kit, not to belabor this, that we put new wheels on it and we can now drive storm drains. In other words, big pipes. So we literally camered the storm drain the other day that goes under First Christian Church. There's an old brick storm line that we were, they were worried about. And we literally camered through that thing looking for failures under their building. And so it's a great tool to have. And these guys have a great service. So they help us find the failures that we can't see with our eyes. Sorry, skipped ahead. So, um, again, so like anything, they are not asking for more staff, but what has, they've struggled with is staff vacancies. So we've had points in time where we haven't been able to have a full complement of crews. So, un- unlike Case and I or whatever, if I'm gone, Case is fully functional. Uh, when you're missing one person off a three-man crew that can't necessarily function and do their job. So we've struggled with retirements or ill, extended illnesses or people leaving for other jobs and had inadequate staffing. So a lot of times we would have to go down to one crew when we got to operate two crews just to keep up with the phone calls for water and sewer repairs. So that's been their biggest struggle is keeping staffing there. I will tell you, uh, what you have approved under, and, and Mario's great ideas is under our new, um, payroll ti- under new pay models that we're gonna have. Merit-based stuff and ability to adjust people where they needed to be in the slot has really, really helped our ability to get people. So I tell you what, we're seeing those positions filled and people staying and we're, we're seeing the results of that. But this, but they, they put this as their struggle because he literally falls apart when he loses one or two guys or they're sick or COVID or whatever. So. Um, also training, uh, one of the other items, and I told you I was gonna kind of skip over some of it, but finding training for his folks has been a challenge. So we want to train these guys in trench safety. They're down in dangerous places and enclosed spaces. And so we've been struggling finding training for them and of course being able to afford those trainings. And so what we'd like to do is start looking for trainings that we can bring here and combine with other departments. Parks can, can come and street guys can come, we can combine it. Carrie's been very good about trying to find some of these trainings and we're hoping now we can start to host those here. Even working with HR eventually to help set those up for us, kind of citywide where it applies. Okay, again, COVID, um, same, same kind of things. Uh, they actually didn't have a lot to, to do other than they separated in more vehicles when they worked and tried to stay out of people's faces when they were working in front of their yards. But for COVID, these guys were working outside. And so their pre and post-COVID were mostly just learning cleanliness and operation changes, you know, when they were inside a building. So full-time employee summary, we have seventeen folks at full complement. Uh, we've got two openings right now that we're trying to fill. I think one of those we are just fixing to fill. I need to confirm that, but we have two openings. So, um, seventeen, it's, and that is, um, uh, we could, that basically funds effectively three crews, as I'll show you here. So that one, sorry, a little hard to read, but as you can see, utility construction has, uh, a camera crew and they have a locate crew. So all day long we have, uh, at least one person locating. So if AT&T is gonna dig or a contractor's gonna dig, they call for locates, well, water and sewer has to be located on the ground. So we've got one guy full-time doing that and an assistant, uh, that was a position we're fixing to fill. Then the next two columns are utility construction crews. And the last column is what we call a maintenance crew that we kind of stole from Bart, we'll shake his head behind me, from wastewater, water wastewater. They were originally there. And we've put them over here, let them still work at the plants, but they are helping because our work on hundred-year-old pipes is so much. We really needed to have three crews on the ground, especially when we had some vacancies here. So that maintenance crew still does water and sewer line replacements, but also helps go to the plants to do some maintenance level work. So again, you can see budget, uh, relatively flat, uh, minor adjustments in, in supplies and payroll costs. But basically, uh, they're not showing a whole lot of changes to their base budget. Uh, so here's, these are replacements, um, one vehicle replacement with a truck that's not running very well. Another dump truck and, and a backhoe. Again, these are all scheduled replacements. So happy to answer questions on utility construction. We're rolling, aren't we? So that is at the end of Regay Street, right there. That is a break in the, in an air relief valve at the very north end of Regay Street during the ice magged. And so just a little.
It's not oil.
Little excited. It's not oil, but this is, this is the call they get. Go out and fix this, you know? And so this is, this is a typical, anyway, I thought it was a cool picture, so. For engineer, cool picture, not. Thank you, Jen. Okay, we will move on. Y'all let me go quick. Water utilities. So again, this year, um, you know, their accomplishments, a lot of times, uh, you don't get to see because when you flush the toilet and you turn on the faucet, they're doing their job. And so, uh, understand that that's a big accomplishment every year for them. And a lot goes behind the scenes to do that. But I will tell you, they have developed a new action plan for monitoring our disinfection levels around town. We have to watch the chlorine and ammonia chlorine mixes that we use around town to make sure when you use the water, it's properly disinfected. It can absolutely not be that way. And so they've developed a really good action plan to check and to monitor this. So. Uh, one of the biggest accomplishments in the sewer end of the world was our pre-treatment program. And we talked to you, I think, a little before about it, but we started in two thousand and eleven, twenty eleven, uh, with, um, TCEQ on a new pre-treatment ordinance that you just recently approved. And that's how long this effort's been going on, using a consultant to help us, uh, cause it's such a specialty item to craft this. But, um, this is, this is in Bart's world and a pre-treatment coordinator, Joy, um, really, really worked hard on this. So this is one of their big accomplishments to take this multi-yong, multi-year project and get it across the goal line. So. Uh, in the future, um, this is one group, water and sewer together, um, learned that we need to change some of our storm preparedness. So, you know, we also talked a little bit about, um, what happened and what could we do different? Even some lectures we've kind of given at rotaries and places to tell everybody what happened. But, so some of the things that happen, happen. But a lot of things, uh, we've learned, hey, if we had done this, we might have avoided some things. So, um, that's not to talk bad about the way we operate, it's to say that some of these things we hadn't prepared for as good as we could have. So part of what they're putting together now is a whole new storm event preparedness. Uh, so that we can go through some drills, we can test generators better ahead of time. There's a whole list. We won't go through today. But this is gonna be a big task as the year goes on for them to, to come up with new standard operating procedures. So. Also an inventory of crucial equipment. One thing we didn't have at the water plant was some duplicate equipment. We cannot afford to keep every board and every computer duplicated, obviously, but there are some critical path items and we're trying to acquire those. And by the way, one of those boards is twenty thousand dollars. I mean, it's not, just go buy it. And so we're trying to acquire some of these parts that we think might be critical and might be at risk. And we're not gonna be a hundred percent knowing that, but we're trying to do that. So these are two things that they're working very hard to see if they can get better prepared for storm. And then continue with a good preventive maintenance program. Again, operational challenges for them. I will say one of the top things, uh, that I think Bart will recognize with me is that changing regs, regulations for sewer treatment, sewer discharge, regulations for water treatment. We can't hardly read them fast enough that, that they change them between the EPA and the TCEQ. And we're not saying it's evil. I'm saying every day there's a new rule or a new way. And half the time, we've got to write reports and do studies and inventories that we even have to get consultant help to do. They're so quick. So they, we have a tremendous administrative burden with regulations and that's just the truth. And it, and it does not get better. Every year it gets worse. So, um, we have a lot of increasing cost in this area. So particularly chemicals, uh, is one of the things we struggle with. We use a lot of chemicals, as you'll see, I think about half million dollars apart or so, I think, probably. Half million dollars of chemicals a year to treat your stuff. And, um, I tell you, right now we have, um, chlorine. Our chlorine supplier has had to back out of the contract because the contract we had with him, he could, he can't meet any longer. The plants can't supply. And, I mean, we can't just up the price. We've got to go back out and rebid everything. But that's how bad it is. A guy with a contract's had to back out of it. So the chemical costs are just going crazy, kind of like lumber costs you've heard. Chemicals are following that. So one of our biggest annual increasing guesses that we make, Bart and I sit in a room and close the door and guess at what chemicals are gonna cost. It's a really big component for us. So, and then again, staffing, uh, Bart's got some asks here, uh, that I'll show you in a second. But, uh, trying to change his staffing model's the same thing. He's had some attrition over time. That attrition has been used probably to make budgets healthy and, uh, where everybody has tried to survive. has been used probably to make budgets healthy. And we, everybody has tried to survive and he's looking to try to fill that back up to some extent. So one of the things I'll tell you, when you see the staffing, the big proposal here is to go to 12-hour shifts at the sewer plant. Now, the water treatment plant at the lake is already on a 12-hour shift regime. And the sewer plant, however, is not on a 12-hour shift. So everybody works all day and they go home. And we have one person that may monitor at night or we may monitor remotely, but we're not truly operating. And so for two reasons. One is security and the other is to have somebody physically on the ground operating to have 12-hour shifts, we think will be better. It'll reduce some overtime that we, we have overtime a lot. So it'll reduce some of our overtime and we think it'll give us a better overall practice. Well, in order to do that, as you'll see in a moment, we're going to ask for two entry-level trainee operators to grow our own, to allow us to go to these 12-hour shifts. The savings, you can, you're going to ask me this in a minute, the savings in overtime is not sufficient to cover both positions. So that's, that's not necessarily the premise. So what service level changes did we make during COVID? Well, again, they did use some technologies to meet, Bart and I did. But we also learned to deal with our vendors and other suppliers. So a lot of their meetings are not with the public. A lot of their meetings are with vendors, suppliers, and engineers. So they were able to incorporate other methods to get, literally, we did, Kerry did one at the landfill, actually, and Bart did one at the sewer plant recently. They did the inspection with TCEQ with a, with an iPhone. They did a virtual inspection and walked around and answered questions and filled out forms. So we've kind of learned how to do that. We actually kind of liked it in a way because we got a perfect grade in that.
The best one we've got.
The best one we've ever gotten, because Bart put his finger over the camera occasionally. Don't look there. No, he didn't do that. Plant was in good shape. So. So there's, there's our current full-time employee summary. We have 20 folks, three in pretreatment, two technical staff members, and then our pretreatment coordinator. Water Utilities has 14, and then the administrative staff, there's three. And that's an admin person, Bart, and Bart's next in charge. So this is kind of, again, organizational chart. And you can see under the Water Utilities Superintendent, now Water Utilities Manager is the superintendent, so it's kind of his assistant. And then they oversee both water operations, wastewater operations, and then we separate ground. And then we have our environmental coordinator, which is the pretreatment, we call, we call them environmental, because they do more than, she does more than just pretreatment. The blue boxes are the asks for the year. So I wanted you to see that. So I told you earlier that in the utility construction department, we had the maintenance group and we stole them from Bart. That's where we stole them from. And so there were actually more than one we stole. So Bart has asked that I really need help because you don't ever send the maintenance guys over to help me. So he's asking for basically a very trained maintenance person to work, to travel between his plants, use their staff to help or bring in supplemental staff from you. But he's asking for just one maintenance person, but a relatively senior-trained maintenance person. And then the other two boxes are operator ones, that's entry-level operators, to grow our own. And I'll tell you why we're asking for operator ones. Not only is the cost less, as you'll see, but we can't hire water and sewer operators. They're not there. They're hard to find. They're literally not. We will have ads open for a year and not fill them. There's just a deficiency, especially in rural East Texas and places like that. So, because you've got to move somebody here from somewhere. And so we've decided our best approach in life is to grow our own, to raise our own, to treat our own. And because we're fixing to retire folks out that are above this on the chart. And it really, really concerns Bart and I that I can't just go get a replacement in a month because they're not there. And some of these guys, you know, these licenses are required to operate. I mean, I've got to have so many B operators and C operators and, and we've got A operator, but we've got to have them. And if they're gone, we're in trouble. And so we want to start growing them. And so this will allow us to go to the 12-hour shift, which will probably give our guys a lot of relief from their own call, because right now we're on call. It'll cut our overtime down and it will let us truly grow our own from the lowest level. And I really think that's an important step for us. I'm close, I promise. So here's water production proposed budget. So interestingly, if you'll look under the 2021 budget at contract services, you'll see kind of a big jump there. So we had, that includes $225,000 in contract you just approved for three firms for customer service inspections. That's where that money is rolled into. And then there were some other, I think there were ice storm repairs?
No, that's the lagoon cleanout that we do.
Lagoon cleanouts. So we also have money, we budget to clean out, what's the lagoon? The lagoon is a big pit at the water treatment plant. It's not nasty, but we get a lot of silt and organics when we treat the drinking water. And it builds up in a pit and we have to pull it out, dry it, and we dispose of it typically at the airport. We have a permit to apply it onto the ground at the airport. And so a lot of times, if we haven't had as much buildup, we can kind of wait and kind of wait. So we've had some monies accruing. And that's what Pam's telling you is Steve didn't spend his money for a couple of years. And now Bart's ready to do a whole bunch. And so it's all been loaded into this budget. So it's, it appears to be artificial. It's a one-time dump of two prior budget years worth of money that we've kind of carried over. So that's what that is. And then again, 225,000 that, that's a contracts that you just issued for customer service inspections. Again, you'll see small increases there for chemicals and that's kind of what's bumping our supplies, stuff up. So but bottom-line budget is just putting us kind of right back in within 100,000 under two and a half million. You know, it's just right back in the best that we can be without anything extraordinary. So wastewater's proposed budget is 2.286 million. And again, we have some increase in supplies, mostly from chemical costs. Sorry, there it is. So what is the ask? So the ask above budget is for the two wastewater operators, operator ones and wastewater and water, excuse me, two operator ones, the maintenance mechanic, and then three normal replacement vehicles. Again, those are on cycle. Those are normally on cycle. So the things that weren't necessarily programmed were the FTEs above that. So. Okay, that's the end of my fun and you guys just did eight whole departments. I'm proud of you.
You just did it.
Any questions? Any questions? Thank you very much.
I'm just a little nervous because you were talking about stealing and then Chief Seavey's talking about stealing. I'm just getting really.
It's a culture. It's a culture, yes.
All right, just thought I'd mention that.
He was taking notes. He was taking notes. And so, thank y'all. Appreciate your patience.
Thank you. And then we'll hear community services.
Next week.
Next week.
Yeah, given the time constraints that we're at, and you all have been at it for quite some time, we'll push community services next week and we'll, we'll get through it.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I was in favor of saying, I.